This is our regular meeting being conducted as a committee of the whole on Monday, August 9th, 6 o'clock via WebEx. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Banks. Brightwell?
Here.
Cruz? Fraser? Haskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum? Mandelbaum?
The website doesn't work.
I'm sorry?
The website doesn't work for everyone to watch.
Oh, okay. Uh, Taylor?
Here.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. We will excuse Councilman Cruz, Fraser, and Mandelbaum.
Okay.
And I, I unmuted, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum just joined, Councilman Mandelbaum just joined us and, uh...
I was, uh, stuck on mute.
Dr. Cruz just joined us. Um, and then I, uh, I did think that the council members called in and that's when the gentleman said that he couldn't, something was wrong with the internet, that he couldn't see the meeting, so...
Okay.
Um, Ken Ziber is here as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay.
Um, Madam President, just, uh, this evening, for point of information, we do have quite a bit of, uh, attendees, so as we navigate through the meeting, we just need a little bit of patience for those who just called in and if they need to speak, uh, we'll have to unmute them, okay?
That'll be fine. And when we're not, uh, when you're not speaking, I ask that everyone would please keep their lines muted just to, uh, eliminate a lot of background noise. So with that, we'll go ahead and get...
Councilman Mandelbaum, just a quick question. I know it was announced earlier or somebody mentioned that the website is, is down, crashing. Is, is this not going to be on, uh, being shown through cable or right now? Cause I know there's a number of people trying to watch it through cable, through the city's internet rather than on their TVs or their website.
I would have to defer to our IT and, uh, cable because it could be on the, um, attendee side. I don't know if it's on the city's side. Are we experiencing any, uh, any issues on our side of, for the city?
Madam President, uh, we don't have return video for AT&amp;T. The only thing I can do is if we don't see it, which I see it on my phone, but I'm resetting the box down here and I reset it earlier, so if something's going on, it could be a cable issue. But I can't, I don't have the access to see return video. That's the way the, the system was set up with AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Right, secretly, if somebody turns into the city's website, they can watch the, they can watch Cable 15 from the, from the homepage of Cable 15 on the website, correct?
If it's working and right now, it looks like it's up and running down here. I'm in the server room and it's up and running, but I don't know if you can't see it. If you can't see it, then there must be something wrong with the AT&amp;T line.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Mandelbaum. Okay, uh, we will start with our Wildlife Advisory Commission presentation and I do believe we have Mr. Schaefer on the, the call.
Uh, yes, I'm here, Ms. President.
Yes.
And I'm also joined by Michelle Merritt, one of the fellow, my fellow commissioners who's gonna be presenting with me.
Good evening, Ms. Michelle. All right, we're gonna turn it over to you. Do, uh, you want us to bring up your presentation?
Um, either that or if you want it, if someone could give me share screen access on my end, I can run through it from here, but either way works. All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, thank you, Madam President and members of the council. Uh, my name's David Schaefer. I'm the chairman of the Southfield Wildlife Advisory Commission and I'm joined here by, uh, Michelle Merritt, who is one of my fellow commissioners. Um, my background's mostly legal with natural resources before I decided to take that path and Michelle is actually a, uh, professor who has a master's in zoology and a background in biology as well, so, um, I believe some of our other commissioners are watching, but they're not joining us tonight, so... Um, I'm gonna try and keep this fairly brief because I know you have a stacked agenda and we did present to, um, a subcommittee of the council already with a more detailed presentation. And then I just wanted to add too that, uh, we were asked to talk a little bit about coyote, um, concerns about coyotes in the city. It didn't make it into the PowerPoint, but I have prepared some materials to talk with you about on that as well. Um, so we can go ahead and click to the next slide. So, the Southfield Wildlife Commission is a new body, um, that was created by this council just last year and we were meeting for about six months before we dove into, uh, this initial report to the council. And we tried to approach things in a manner that was consistent both with the Ford, uh, the foundational resolution as well as the city's master plan, um, which takes a holistic approach to social, economic, environmental, and sustainability issues. Um, and that's especially important when thinking about wildlife because you need to think about things in a holistic manner. There's a lot of competing interests, um, a lot of competing viewpoints and it's oftentimes gonna be difficult to find, uh, uniformity and consensus on any one thing, but that doesn't mean that things don't need to be done sometimes. Um, so if we click forward to the next slide, um, just an abbreviated reminder of what our mission statement was, we were formed with the purpose of creating a wildlife program within the city, um, working and seeking resident, working with and seeking residents, residents and stakeholders, uh, working collaboratively, both with individuals and other organizations as well as local, state, county, and other entities, um, in an effort to come up with a wildlife management plan. Um, that's a very broad task, so we approached things initially from a broad perspective. Um, and if there's a more focused manner in which the commission should pursue its work in the future, that's something we can do, we would just need some guidance from council on that. Um, moving to the next slide, uh, we set some initial action items, uh, that we thought we could do within the initial six months, um, to brief the city council and we can expand on these as we move forward. One of the big steps was an information gathering stage to talk with different departments within the city, uh, other communities, uh, state experts like our regional DNR biologist and others to find out where things stand, what our options are, what some other communities have done, and what the city's currently doing. We also looked into, uh, road signage concerns because there are concerns about animal-related accidents. We conducted a very preliminary residential survey, um, that was a small chat snapshot of the community with only about 200, a little over 250 respondents, so it's a very small snapshot, um, but at least a snapshot for now. Uh, and we also looked at some of the, um, challenges other communities are facing and different options for educational resources so that we could create some long and short-term recommendations for the city. Uh, moving to the next slide, uh, one of the biggest things that spurred the formation of this commission is the deer population in Southfield, which has grown significantly. Uh, the city's been working with Farmington Hills for a number of years now to do an aerial survey and in 2018 and 2019, there was between 200, about 250 to 280 deer that were measured within the city, which was floating around nine to 10 and a half deer per square mile, which isn't that bad of a number. Uh, the 200, 2020 numbers showed a very significant increase. Uh, we don't know if that is due to better survey conditions or maybe the other numbers were artificially low, but whatever it was, in 200, 2020, 869 deer were measured, um, within Southfield city limits, which is about 33 deer per square mile. And that is significantly higher than what the Department of Natural Resources considers to be the maximum sustainable population density for an urban area, which is about 20 deer per square mile. And, uh, just for perspective sake, in a non-urban environment, a whitetail deer generally found in five to 10 deer per square mile as a healthy, sustainable population. Uh, so we, the numbers, we don't wanna dwell on too much, we wanna point them out for the sake of just acknowledging that there are a lot of deer in the city. Um, reproduction rates is shown at the third bullet point is generally about 1.8 fawns per doe per year. And when we talked with the DNR biologist, uh, we were informed that, uh, sometimes the rates are actually higher in practice because we're seeing more twins and triplets being born with two or more of the fawns surviving through the winter, which is something you don't generally see outside of an urban environment as much. So, since 2017 through the present day, the deer population's been moving steadily east and so a lot of longtime residents in the city have noticed what appears to be a very significant increase in the number of deer they're seeing and we're also seeing a correlation with an increase in residential complaints about deer. Um, if we go over to the next slide, I can cover just briefly some of the different ideas for deer management. So, um, when I say deer management, oftentimes that means population control. Before you get there, there's always a public education component of it, which is gonna be a large focus of what we've recommended doing. But once you get past the point of people learning to live in harmony and trying to learn to live as best as they can with the wildlife, or if population numbers get too high to the point where they're unhealthy, it oftentimes is necessary to start considering whether population control is something that the city wants to do. When we talk about population control or deer management with, um, in this sense, there's generally three methods that are used if you're actively trying to reduce the deer population. One is sterilization and birth control, which tend to be popular among residents, but they're also quite costly. Um, physical sterilization can occur in the field, it's much like spaying the deer, um, after tranquilizing them, restraining them, you spay them, you release them. And then there's also options for chemical birth control, which based on our research seems to be a twice in a lifetime at least treatment where the deer do have to be trapped, injected, and released. And our local DNR biologist suggested that that renders the deer's meat unedible, which means they oftentimes have to be tagged so that if they do wander outside of the city and a hunter gets them, people know not to eat them. Uh, we don't have a lot of specific information and costs at this point, but one well-known company that has worked with the city of Ann Arbor is White Buffalo Incorporated and on their website, they estimated, uh, chemical birth control costs to be between 500 and 1,500 per deer. And then sterilization costs can be higher than that upfront, but you only need to do it once in the deer's lifetime. The next option is sharpshooters. Um, this tends to be somewhat controversial with residents because of the safety risks, um, involved with it. Um, the two ways we've found this has been done is through either the use of local police force, um, officers, or through a third party which use trained sharpshooters or some combination of the two. Uh, DNR does have permits that are available to make this possible and they're not that expensive, so most of your costs ends up being staffing, um, and processing and if you're paying a third party. Uh, so this can really vary a lot. Looking to Ann Arbor as an example again, um, they've told us that they spent, they contracted with White Buffalo for a four or five-year contract. There was about a $250,000 upfront cost during the first year and then it was about $100,000 annually after that to continue doing the program. And that program involved a combination of, um, poling, so actually killing the deer, and then also sterilization of females within the population. And I was just checking their four-year annual report, um, and it looks like they were able to decrease their deer population by about 50%, 58% over a four-year period. Uh, those costs can be a bit high, it's, um, but not as high as sterilization, so sharpshooters generally tend to range between 200 to 400 per deer and there can also be additional meat processing fees if you're using a third-party company. Um, there are some possibilities in Michigan to work with a group called Hunters Against Hunger, um, which if we can work with them, they cover the processing fees, they use local butchers to process the meat and then the meat all gets donated to, uh, various churches, food shelters, um, food kitchens and things like that. And then the third option for population control is using local hunters, um, for archery at limited sites within a city, which oftentimes tend to be city-owned property and parks, uh, sometimes golf courses and other large landowners in the area will pay up, um, help out with this. Meridian Township is one group that has implemented this in their locality along with using their police force for some sharpshooting. And the cost of doing a local hunt is fairly low, uh, because there's not a whole lot on permitting side, you have some administrative costs and then also some, um, training costs and certification costs for oversight. And, uh, Meridian Township said that they spent about $5,000 on equipment upfront and then probably spend around $65,000 or less annually in total administrative and oversight expenses and most of that is done through, uh, two people on the city's staff that largely oversee the program. Um, so then before I move on to the next slide, I just wanted to cover briefly coyotes because that was something that we've received some more concerns about recently. Um, coyote management's approached a little bit differently from deer, uh, at least it has been in some of our neighboring states. I looked at some examples from Illinois dealing with Chicago and its suburbs, as well as a study that was done by some professors and students at Ohio State. Um, and they found that relocation generally, even if it's legal, isn't a viable option because the coyotes either come back or they die quickly or they just move to a different, uh, neighborhood and a new male or female or mating pair replaces them. But the way that the Ohio State study, uh, proposed looking at urban coyote issues was, uh, through looking at a four-tier threat level to try and gauge what you're gonna do. Uh, the first tier was if coyotes are rarely or occasionally seen at night and around dusk and dawn hours and residents start hearing them, uh, that generally warrants some level of public education and considering a feeding ban if there isn't one already. The next level is when coyotes are seen more frequently in the day and very often at night and if house pets maybe start disappearing, that can be a sign that you've reached the next tier. Public education's still a big component, feeding bans are still recommended. Um, and then it's oftentimes discussed to start using what's called hazing techniques, which is largely, uh, teaching people how to deal with the coyotes and also having maybe, um, public safety officers or animal control going around when coyotes are spotted and using noise devices, things like paintball guns, sprinklers, stuff like that, with the idea of reinstilling some fear of humans in the coyotes. Um, if you get beyond tier two, that's when coyotes start getting seen more often in the day and the more concerning factor is they start showing less fear of people. Uh, so that can be seen in, at, at stage three, it's generally seen in, um, hazing not working, so they're not running away when people are yelling at them, when people are spraying at them, um, and pets, uh, end up getting attacked. And at that point, you're still gonna do all the things you would before, but it's at that point time to start considering some removal. And generally, removal programs are done with the idea of initially just targeting specific problem animals and trapping them or, uh, killing them and, um, eliminating the problem in that manner. Once you get beyond stage three, that's when you really have coyotes no longer having any fear of humans, they become more aggressive, more fearless, they're seen during the day more often, you may see pack behavior, um, and you may see more pets and animals disappearing more regularly, not just the stray, the cat that's out at night, but maybe animals taking pets out of people's yards. Um, at that point, you absolutely are gonna do everything before, but you're gonna be considering more broad, uh, broad spectrum removal efforts and some communities have taken the approach when they get to that point to try and reduce their population numbers by 50, 75% or more to get the numbers back down and then from there, you can sometimes manage the problem a bit more. Uh, so, based, we did this research a, a little bit quickly because it wasn't a big focus of the initial efforts, but based on what we, I've heard from some local resident complaints, I'd probably put Southfield somewhere between the two and the three level at this point. Um, so it's probably a time to start considering whether some management of the coyote population is necessary. Um, and then if it is, then how the city wants to approach it. So, with those broad perspectives in mind, um, just a couple other figures for you before we get into the survey results. Uh, if we go to the next slide, we did look into, uh, animal-related car accidents in the area. Um, the Southfield Department of Public Works spends about $25,000 a year, sometimes a bit more, disposing of dead wildlife, largely deer that are hit by cars. Um, and based on a few different sources, it looks like we generally have had between 80 and 90 animal-related car accidents that have been reported since 2019. Um, and this is probably an underestimate because not everyone reports it. So, if you go to the next slide, um, that is just a map of parkas pickups within Southfield from RDPW. Um, it's a little small here, but if you look in close where the stars tend to clump, it does show that there's certain parts of the city largely near green spaces and waterways where deer accidents are more frequent. And when you look at the color coding of the stars, there is a spike in deer-related, um, fatalities in the rutting season, which tends to be the early to mid-fall. Um, so if we're going to consider increased signage or efforts to reduce deer accidents, it may be worth focusing on that rutting season when there tends to be a spike in deer-related car accidents. Uh, and then the next slide is just a similar map with Oakland County Road Commission data showing reported deer-related accidents from 2018 and 2019. Um, and again, there's some clustering in certain areas and along certain roads, but this data doesn't have date-specific, uh, information at this level, you'd have to go into a more granular report. Um, so with that in mind, I, I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle to cover the residence survey that we did briefly. Uh, she's got some, um, some of just the broad purposes that we went through and then the initial results that we were able to get from the snapshot we did receive.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Um, I'd just like to say that if we move to the next slide, 10, uh, the survey components that we focused on in terms of metrics were demographics, wildlife experiences, values, and expectations. So, experiences really addressed whether they positive, negative, or a mixture, if they had damage, what types of damage did they have, what were their concerns? With the, uh, values, do they consider wildlife beneficial or not in the city of Southfield? And then the expectations has to do with the role of the city. So if we advance to the next slide, the abbreviated, of course, version of this, demographically, we had a, um, we, we found that 96% of the people that responded owned a single-family home and they've been, 71% has been in their home 11-plus years, over 50% 21-plus years. All areas of Southfield were represented, represented, and also multiple age groups. With regard to experiences, 71% were not aware of neighbors feeding any wildlife except for birds. And then in terms of their personal experiences, it was very mixed. 50% had negative experiences and 50% were a combination of, of experiences that were not negative or maybe if they were negative, they thought the benefits outweighed the challenges. Biggest wildlife concerns overall, all respondents, were 57% damage to landscape or property. Coming in second was, uh, 13% pet injury. These were concerns, not actual experiences. If we go to the next slide, please. The, uh, individuals who had negative experiences, which again were 50% of the respondents, uh, the, the species list for problematic deer topped the list at 76% and then going down from there were woodchucks, skunks, and raccoons. And of those that had negative experiences, 57% said they had tried multiple solutions, including chemical repellents, fencing, resistant, uh, plants, you know, in terms of edibility, and then also trapping. And then, uh, if we asked people what their most negative experience was, it was really 90% said damage to landscape, property, or residence. In the next slide, we take a look at values. Values have to do with, uh, whether or not people thought things were problematic versus, you know, and negative versus beneficial. Uh, negative impact, 17%, 17, said they were highly problematic. 34% said they were not problematic. And then of course, 49%, meaning of course the majority here, slightly to moderately problematic. When we asked about the impact that was positive, beneficial, 35% of the folks said highly beneficial, 17%, so it's kind of almost the reverse numbers, uh, said not beneficial. And then again, the majority, 48% this time, slightly to moderately beneficial. And the next slide has to do with expectations around, and I think there are two slides for this, what the city, what the role they think the city should play. So with, uh, with regard to this, only about a little over half, 53% of the folks were aware that the South, uh, that the Wildlife Advisory Commission existed. Of the, uh, folks that answered the question, which was 96% of respondents, they answered the question about the city having a more active role, 73% said yes. Two questions about, um, the potential management, if we look at just strongly agree and agree only, 70% strongly agree or end agree, education on deer-resistant landscaping would be helpful. 93% agree in to improve and restore natural vegetation in natural areas. 97% want education on coyote behavior. 85% want an increase in the number of deer crossing signs and reflective warnings. 69% are pro installing wildlife bridges and tunnels over busy roads. If we go to the next slide, still with the agreement piece, 91% strongly agree and/or agree that we should, the city should be managing roadside vegetation and 68% strongly agree plus agree that an ordinance is needed to ban wildlife feeding of males. At the bottom of the current slide, we're looking at population control. 59% strongly agree or agree that birth control for deer is ideal. 41% say no, nothing, don't, don't intervene. The, uh, business of population control that is lethal for deer, 40% of the respondents strongly agreed or agreed. 60% said they strongly disagreed or disagreed. And then lastly, for the coyotes with regard to lethal measures, 46% strongly agreed or agreed and 55% said that they disagreed strongly or just generally disagreed. Okay, then then, uh, with regard to the summarizing points, which is the next slide, in general, people would like to see an increase of money spent in wildlife management and habitat restoration, although there's mixed responses about increasing any kind of public expense. Uh, people want to maintain and establish and/or establish a harmonious relationship with wildlife, they're very pro, uh, public education. With regard to population control, again, 59% strongly agree or agree with birth control for deer, 40% strongly agree or agree. 40% strongly or agree or agree, strongly agree or agree for lethal for deer. And 46% strongly agree or agree for lethal for coyote. And the other takeaway with this is that the general public in our city seems to want to see data to support any action, further actions that may be taken with regard to wildlife and possibly publish some reports. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. That was excellent, excellent report. But before we go on, I do want to apologize, we are experiencing difficulties with the streaming from the website. I do apologize for that. We are recording this and we will be presenting it again via Cable 15 and/or our website. But I wanted to apologize to everyone that's trying to get on and watch this presentation because it is a very, very good presentation. And I apologize that you cannot see it at this time. Did you have any other remarks that you wanted to add, Mr. Schaefer or Ms. Merritt?
Yeah, President Tyler, we just have a couple high-level recommendations for the council to consider. We could skip past the next slide that's covering feedback from adjacent communities. And the long story short on that is that other than Farmington Hills, not many of our neighboring communities are really actively taking action right now on this. And Farmington Hills is interested in partnering, but they want to take a regional approach if possible. We had come up with a few ideas for community education, but I can, we can skip past this slide just to the recommendations and I can talk about those. So we had some short-term recommendations that we thought were things that the city might want to act on now despite the truncated timeline and the fact that COVID has made it more difficult to get as much public engagement as we want. One is that we think that we could follow the lead of many other communities and dedicate some space on the city's website to be a repository for information for the public. Both Ann Arbor and Meridian Township have done this and some other communities have as well. And it's generally things like, you know, a list of deer-resistant plants, brochures and flyers on what to do when you have an encounter with different kinds of wild animals, data, scholarly articles, repellent techniques, what can you do to try and keep the animals away from you? So that is a very low-cost, easy-to-implement solution that we think the city could jump on now while it considers other action. Depending on what role the city wants the Wildlife Commission to take in the future, if we are going to be serving as a public face for the city or fielding concerns, comments, and complaints, then we think it would be a good idea for the commission to have some kind of social media presence because that would also allow us to engage with a broader audience and probably a younger audience than who we're hitting currently. As far as public education goes, those can be done through workshops, videos, public television, whatever methods are available. I think in-person workshops may be the most effective, but obviously current conditions make it difficult to do those. And then for deer-related accidents, if the city has the money for it, we could launch a pilot program looking into increasing signage in some of the hotspots around the city, especially with the fall coming up now. The presentation given to the neighborhood's community had some pricing on different kinds of signs that can be used, but there was strong resident support for that. So, and then the final point was just the idea of not feeding wildlife. We received a little bit of mixed information about whether Southfield already has an ordinance prohibiting the feeding of wildlife. My understanding now is that we do not. This has been a first step for most communities is to make it clear that you can't feed wildlife other than birds in a bird feeder within the city. It cuts down on the attractive nuisance. And even if the city didn't enact an ordinance, it is currently illegal in most, if not all of the lower peninsula to feed deer because of D N R regulations that have been implemented. So that's an easy ask for the city. The next slide covers some long-term recommendations and thoughts that we had. One is that we'd like to invest in more time for study and surveying of public opinion. Every community that we talked to that has taken steps towards managing their deer population or other wildlife in the city has all said that the success of the program is largely measured by whether the public felt engaged. It's always a divisive issue, but if you don't involve the public upfront, it's not going to work out in the long run because people aren't going to understand, there's going to be misconceptions, there's going to be misinformation. And no matter whether people are happy or mad about the decision, it just doesn't work as well. So we think we should continue to get public input. We think the annual deer count aerial survey should continue for at least another year so we can make sure that increase we saw in the data was accurate. Beyond that, you know, there's opportunities for partnering with some of our local schools, colleges, and other interest groups. If the city decides to take active steps either on habitat restoration or population management, we've got a lot of great resources in the area and within the state to do that. And it does sound like there's at least broad interest in the region of trying to find a collaborative solution to things like deer and coyote management because they don't respect municipal boundaries. That's something we want to continue looking at because the logistics of doing that could get rather complicated. But I do think it's a good idea and so does everyone else on the commission, even though there are differing views about what the best approach in the future is. But that's everything we have for you. So any, any questions that the council has for Michelle or I, we're happy to take those.
Again, thank you so much for this very thorough presentation, although it was cut down, you still provided us with a lot of information and it was very well presented. I will go through the council and ask if there's any questions that they'd like to ask. And again, thank you so much for presenting tonight and for being a part of this commission. It's very important to us. Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Yes, the board, I was honored to be on the Boards and Commissions Committee to help select this Wildlife Commission. We had a lot of excellent, excellent applicants and in the ones we chose, they put a lot of work into the study up to this point. The Neighborhood Services met with the committee on June 28th of this year. And as you can see, in just six months' time, they put an unbelievable presentation together. I believe it was a consensus of the wild, excuse me, of the Neighborhood Services Committee that the recommendations of the Wildlife Committee, both their short term and long term, were excellent ones. We agreed that we needed to educate the residents. We agreed with their additional time for surveys. And, you know, I'm not sure how we can do this, but if they could also have a presence on social media. As you can see, their presentations before us this evening were excellent, easy to understand, and it's, it's, it's a beginning to try and address the situation. I believe at the Neighborhood Services Committee, we focused more on deer versus the coyote. But I personally agree with their recommendations with reference to the coyotes. And it sounds like, like Mr. Schaefer said, we are in between the three and four stage. And maybe there are certain areas within our city that we need to start considering to actually remove the coyotes. I don't think we have a problem throughout the entire Southfield, but it seems like there's small pockets that the animals do exist. So that's all I have to say. I want to thank Mr. Schaefer, Ms. Meredith, and their committee for the excellent presentation. And I personally agree with everything that they have said.
Thank you so much. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I, I really liked the presentation. It was excellent presentation and thorough, really. I have a couple of questions. How, how effective have signs been deemed to be?
I could take that question, Councilman. We were struggled a little bit to find a lot of data on the signage. The best that I was able to come up with was, there was a study, it was either the Minnesota Department of Transportation or the Montana Department of Transportation had looked into using reflectors on their high, state highways. And they found in that context, they were very effective at keeping deer off of the highway and lowering crashes because it spooked the deer before they jumped out with the reflection of lights off of the reflectors. But obviously, that's a very different circumstance than local roads with shorter distances, more shrubbery on the side. So I, I, I'm not going to place much weight on that. I think that anecdotally speaking, people do tend to notice new things more than they notice signs that have existed for a long time. So it seems to me that if the city wanted to launch a pilot or a study, we could try doing that. Another option might be to just focus on the hotspots and seasons where there is increased deer traffic and maybe put the resources into leasing or using the lighted construction signs that residents are very much going to see and is going to be new and attract them. But then those would only be there for a couple of months out of the year.
Okay. I clearly would be in favor of doing something and making, obviously deal with the short term and then proceed to get into the long term. And clearly, it's a very good report, very good results, and we got a good, a good feel of what the, what the citizens think. So I think this is a good time to start doing something. What, has anyone given, gotten an estimate of how much it would deal with tunnels and bridges for animals? Do we have an approximate number, a dollar amount for that kind of solution?
Frankly, we did not look into specific numbers on that because I think most people on the commission viewed those options as probably being cost prohibitive. But we could look into it. I know, if not in Michigan, I know that there are many communities or states around the country that have tried this. It just seems to be most likely a higher cost expense because it's a large-scale road construction project.
Yeah, I, I would agree. That, that would entail some deep discussion simply because of the costs involved and the, I assume this would, they would be placed in hotspots where there's a known traffic of animals in, in, in that particular spot. And, you know, whatever your, I don't want to try to guide you at this particular point. I think you guys are doing a good job as far as looking at the data and coming up with some obvious solutions. But the next one, you indicated previously that we are in the two, between the two and three tiers, given our, given our surrounding communities, Farmington, obviously Farmington Hills, are they in a similar tier category, two and three, between two and three?
Are, are you referring to the coyote threat level category that was discussed?
Sorry, well, you know, perhaps I did, yeah, yeah. I have it down my note, maybe I mixed it up. Yeah, would, I guess that's where it came up, the coyote, yes.
In, in terms of the coyote, I haven't talked with other communities about that. I would suspect that some of them are probably similar numbers. When we look at the data, Farmington Hills City Council or Board of Trustees just looked at recently, they are at a very similar number as far as deer population goes, which is part of the reason they're considering some more active programs in that regard because I think they were also very close to 30,000 or 30 deer per square mile. I don't recall the precise figure though.
Okay, all right. Realizing that if we start calling and we start taking care of our issue, there, there will be a migration towards some other community. And assuming that Farmington Hills is doing something, they will start migrating to our community as, as for the clean spot. How, how difficult or what will be the, and this is why we'll follow up on, where, what would be the process of collaborating with our surrounding communities to make sure we have a cohesive and, and joint, jointed problem solving? So if Farmington Hills is doing something and they, they're pushing deer to us, they obviously, if we're doing things coordinated-wise, it's a poison, it, effort, and we're now pushing the problem off on the next, next geographic location.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take a shot at this answer. And if, Michelle, if you have anything to add, please do. As far as the coordination level goes, the D N R biologist made it sound like at least the municipal level, it would be fairly simple to coordinate between us because there's not a whole lot of oversight and permitting that's needed to be done at the state level. So it would really be up to the municipal governments to decide what their action plan's going to be, how much money is being put in by the different communities, what techniques are going to be used, and then when the, when the activities are going to occur and where they're going to occur. But the general consensus we have received from everyone is that deer management ends up becoming a almost perpetual process because they're going to continue to reproduce, deer are going to continue to migrate, especially the bucks. They move around a lot more than the does. And a single buck can mate with many females in a year. So no matter what we do or neighboring communities do, the deer are going to be here to stay most likely unless the environment itself becomes inhospitable. And I don't see Southfield going backwards on its efforts to improve its green spaces, its parks, its waterways, and things like that. So in some ways, we're a victim of our own success in having improved the natural environment to a state where wildlife feel like they can return. But it's also creating conflicts with humans. So, you know, I, I, I don't have a yes or a no answer for you, other than to say that collaboration would be a good idea, but no matter whether we collaborate or not, it's going to be a long-term effort on any community's part to try and keep a handle on the deer. Michelle, do you have anything to add to that?
I would just add that I concur. The animal populations seem to be increasing in both Farmington Hills, Farmington and Southfield, based on aerial surveys. I looked at some data that showed a dramatic increase between, I believe it was 2019 and 21, but there's, there was no survey in 2020, but we know there were a lot, many fewer vehicles on the road. And the last time there was a dip in both populations of deer was the last very strong polar vortex. So we have an increasingly more hospitable climate with the climate change, more vegetation growth, and more success rates and survival of the deer. So whatever we recommend and/or the city decides to do, it's, it's going to be on a continual basis with regard to the deer population, absolutely.
The last question, and or what, and this, this is an issue, and I have neighbors started asking me about deer in our neighborhood. Historically, we had not seen that many deer, but now there's a uptick in the sightings. What would you want council to do to get, to assist you in, 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 in getting things started with respect to, in essence, just getting things started? Because it's an excellent report, I hate to see the report down the van with all this excellent, excellent information. We should have a starting point. We can start small and, you know, just graduate to, 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 to more advanced solutions. But what would you like council to do to get you guys past the study stage?
Right. So a couple of things we had discussed. One is that the initial formational resolution from council was very broad, and I think intentionally so. But if the most valuable work that the commission can be doing is focusing on public education and potential problem species management, then perhaps some guidance as to where our efforts should be focused would be helpful. You know, habitat restoration, I think, is something that for many of us goes hand in can with wildlife management, but it's not necessarily directly tied to problem species management either. And some we shouldn't be considering and should lead to parks and rec, we can. Or we could continue to take a more holistic ecosystems-type approach. So just a little bit of guidance as to where we should focus would be great. would be great. As far as if the city's going to go down the path of population management for coyotes or deer or anything else, it would be nice to know that because one initial step would probably be to continue the public education efforts so that the public's informed of what the options are and what the costs are, and then choosing a path. Now, whether choosing a path is done through, you know, a non-binding resolution that the residents vote on to guide council or the council just making a difficult decision, which unfortunately you all have that job. You know, once we have an approach, then you can start taking further action. We could go so far as to start getting more detailed cost estimates and trying to engage with companies at this point, but some of that time may be wasted if the city's not sure yet whether it's actually going to move forward with managing population either. So for us, just guidance as to how we should be spending the next six to 12 months, I think is going to be the most valuable.
Okay, well, that, that sounds good. I think with, with the assistance of every council person, I think with the Madam Chair concurrence, we could probably give you some guidance. Well, thank you very much for this presentation. It was insightful.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, the only, I think, you know, everybody's pretty much covered everything I wanted to say. David, Michelle, you did a great job in your presentation. The things that I came out of it with was community education and the signage, I think, would be some low-hanging fruit that we can get into. Also, I'm in favor of the birth control option in this matter. So I would just like to put that out there as well, because I don't want to hurt or harm any of the, any of the animals that are here. But I did have one question. If we were trying to do removal of any of these species, where will we take them? Where would the deer go? Where would the, where would the foxes go or whatnot?
Right. And I, and by removal, I'm assuming you're meaning relocation, if that's correct. Yeah, so that's a complicated question. My understanding, and this is something we'd have to confirm with DNR, is that relocation of deer within Michigan is very frowned upon, if not unlawful, in part because of disease concerns. There have been cases of chronic wasting disease and some other concerning diseases in Michigan. They haven't made it into our area, which is very fortunate, but that can serve as a barrier. But beyond that, assuming it was lawful or is lawful to relocate these animals, we would probably have to either find a private landowner that would be okay with them being relocated to their property, or find some other public landowner like the state or county that would be okay with relocating the animals. And outside of large apex predators, I'm not currently aware of real, active relocation programs in Michigan. And Michelle could probably expand on this, but I believe she's mentioned to me that relocation efforts for wild animals oftentimes tend to be unsuccessful too.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you. Typically, when animals are relocated, they are already being put into areas that are al- already overcrowded. So the individuals who are relocated typically cannot compete with the existing individuals that are more familiar with that local habitat. And so they end up dying typically.
Okay. And, and if I could just ask one more question, Madam President. It seems like I heard or talked about, some folks about, unfortunately, you know, taking the lives of these animals, particularly the deers, but then using it for food, for homeless and so forth. I thought, I thought Auburn Hills did that. Is that correct? Or am I, did I miss something?
I'm not aware of Auburn Hills specifically, but both Meridian Township and Ann Arbor do that, and Oakland County, they have a management program within the Kensington Parks Complex, and they also donate all of the meat. So that is a fairly well-established program in Michigan. There's different groups to work with. The only limitations on it generally are if there are any disease concerns, then obviously the meat can't be used. But the, the way the programs manage, things get tested and it's ensured that it's safe before it, after it's processed and before it goes to any people for consumption.
All right, very good. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier? Okay, Councilman Hoskins?
All right, thank you. And thank you both for this presentation. As my colleagues have said, this has been a very thoughtful, thought-provoking presentation. I think this is exactly what we were hoping for when we put the, put this commission together last year. So thank you so much for your work on this. I just have a couple of questions. One, as kind of piggybacking off of Councilman Cruz's questions, it, it sounds like there's, it might not be that many options as far as deer are concerned. I mean, if we started moving towards the path of somehow getting them out of the city, either by relocating them or doing some kind of a call. It sounds like relo- relocating might not be the best option, or it might not be a viable option, but we're, we're not sure yet. And it sounds like maybe a call or something might be the, that thing we ultimately have to do. Am I, am I reading into that right or?
Um, yes and no, Councilman. So the population in Southfield is quite large already. So one of the questions I suppose would be from the perspective of residents and the city government is how long is the public patience for getting the population numbers down? You could theoretically, if there's the budget for it, do a purely non-lethal program using birth control and sterilization. It's more expensive, and, but over time, several generations down, it would theoretically result in a lower overall population number. But it may be fairly slow. Alternatively, you could take a pure call approach and each year animals get taken and the population grows back and more get taken. And at some point, hopefully you reach an equilibrium. But our local DNR biologist had suggested you have to remove between fifty and seventy percent of the population each year almost to maintain those numbers. The approach that Ann Arbor took seems to be somewhat of a hybrid approach, where initially there was more calling, killing of the animals done. Then, at the same time, the sterilization and birth control efforts were brought in, and over time, less lethal methods were necessary and the focus shifted to more non-lethal methods. That may be an option, assuming all the permitting can be approved for using the non-lethal methods and we can coordinate with DNR to make sure we're in compliance of state law. There could be hybrid options, but as things stand, the chances of our natural, our deer population going down significantly through natural means is fairly unlikely because the only real sources of death for deer in this area are car accidents, starvation, and weather, and disease, which we don't see much evidence of disease right now. So it, it may be that some kind of heavy-handed measure will be needed at some point.
And, and with that too, and thank, very, I thank you so much for the answer. With that, so taking Ann Arbor, for example, even with them doing a hybrid, a hybrid approach, it still costs them annually a hundred thousand dollars?
That was the number we were given. My understanding is that that was a negotiated contract with White Buffalo. So it, it, there was probably some give and take there. But the, the expenses are going to be fairly high because they were removing, I believe, over a hundred deer a year initially, and then all, and then they sterilized, I think, at least eighty or ninety deer over the last four years. So just based on the cost estimates I saw on White Buffalo's website, those numbers sound fairly reasonable.
And going to the, the coyote situation, which, I mean, it was, we, as a council, we've been getting people reaching out to us. Councilwoman Banks, you know, mentioned that, that it seems right now, we seem to be having pockets of coyotes, but I know in one particular part of the city, I mean, there, there are coyotes all over the place. There are, I got, I have video, I reached out to a resident, and they sent me video of their backyard within a couple of hours, three or four coyotes, just having a good time, like, like they pay bills at her house. There were reports, someone, a coyote, a coyote was on someone's porch. Today, someone called me and said a coyote was on Bell Road, just taking in, taking in the sun. So I think, so I think my, my big question, this is for, not just for our wildlife commissioners, but for anyone in the city. You know, if a resident sees a coyote, and also there have been reports to of them going, we had someone reach out to us about them attacking their, their small dog. And so when people see a coyote now, I mean, what are their recourse? And like I say, I'm opening this up to also our city administration as well. Who should they reach out to for this?
Yeah, Councilman, I, I, I would think that animal control is one option, although in the conversations we had with animal control, it does sound like there's at least currently some limitations in what animal control is willing to do if the animal is, if a wild animal is still alive. I did check DNR regulations, and if coyotes are endangering people or their property or their pets, you don't need a permit or a harvesting permit to kill the animal. So that is an option for individual problem animals. But, you know, I would also suggest to people that one of the issues may be that coyotes in Michigan, in Southfield just don't view humans as a threat anymore. And so one thing I read in several studies was that, you know, if you haven't reached the point of them being so normalized to human interactions that it's not possible, human efforts to reinstate that fear are very important. And that could be things like making loud noises, using sprayers, using chemical repellents. You know, I, I heard, read some suggestions about people using paintball guns. Not that we probably want residents shooting the wildlife with paintball guns, but maybe it's something our animal control officers or police force could do. So there are options that you can try before getting to a lethal effort. But if there's problem animals, you may have to go there. And it looks like Michelle may have some commentary on this too.
Yes, thanks, David. I would just like to add that I think a certain amount of the fear of coyotes, which is certainly understandable, is an education piece. If one's small pets are protected and, and the animals have not become like a tier three slash four aggressive, then a lot of it is just understanding the natural behavior of the coyotes, which many people, I don't have the data right in front of me right now, expressed wanting to learn more about. Ninety-seven percent of our respondents wanted more education on coyote behavior. I think it's, some of it's fear, and that can be easily, much more easily mitigated versus, even if they're taking small pets, if the small pets are not left alone outdoors, then it's not likely, likely to happen at this stage of the game. The other thing I just want to throw out there is that we, I live in a neighborhood with coyotes in Southfield, and we have no problems with too many woodchucks, too many skunks, and too many rats, because we have the coyotes.
I'm sure there are some people who, if you're, if you're more afraid of rats than the coyotes, then I'm sure you're, you very much appreciate their presence there. Those are all the questions I had. Thank you again so much for your work on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. This was a great presentation. I thoroughly enjoyed it. It has, gives us a lot to think about. I also, like Councilwoman Banks said, when we appointed you or when we were interviewing all the applicants for the Wildlife Commission, you could tell that was going to, they were going to do some good things, and I think this is great. I do agree that I think you should have some type of presence on our city's website to help, you know, this PowerPoint presentation and other informational items that would probably be helpful for residents who are looking for, for things. So we can, we can definitely talk with the city administration and get something going for you, you know, on one of the, the sub-pages. I did have a couple of questions, though, about the data that you guys pulled or from your, from your survey. How many people responded to that survey? And do you know which part of the city they live in?
I can fill that one. We had two hundred and twenty-six respondents, two-two-six, and they represented all regions of Southfield. I don't have the breakdown in front of me, but the raw data we can send to you, I think you already have it possibly, which shows breakdown, you know, by major crossroads, that we think all parts of the city were represented. I don't know how equally represented, but they were all represented, as were all age groups.
And, and I ask that because, you know, for example, in my neighborhood, there's a couple deer. They don't bother, they don't, most people are not bothered by them. We have no coyotes. We have no rats, groundhogs, you know, an occasional skunk and lots of squirrels. So for me, coyotes would not be as important as somebody who lives, you know, by Twelve Mile and Bell Road where there's a, you know, I think a daily occurrence of, of coyotes. And, you know, the deer, I mean, the biggest complaint we have with deer is that they're eating people's landscaping. But I do know that the, the coyotes in some of the areas, I think they probably have hit that foremark. You know, small animals have, have gotten bit and things like that. And, you know, maybe we do need to come up with some type of, of plan, looking at the coyotes. I know that, you know, obviously there's different options, trapping, snipers, birth control, you know, things like that. But who, you know, I don't know exactly what would be the, the best solution, especially since Southfield is the center of it all. Just because we take care of it in one part of the city, doesn't mean that they're not coming into the neighborhood from another, you know, from Farmington Hills. So that's something else that we have to be mindful of. There, we're going to need some cooperation from our neighbors because whatever we do, you know, we could get rid of all the, all the wildlife to get, altogether. And then next thing you know, they, you know, they hear there's some vacancies and all the deer and coyotes coming from Farmington Hills. You know, same thing. I, I don't think the signage would be helpful. I just don't know if the deer know how to read the signs that they're not really welcome. But, you know, people, people know that there, there's deer in, in the area. I don't, I don't know how much that would do. And as you mentioned, even with the, you know, bridges or tunnels, I mean, that's, that's a huge expense that the city probably does not want to incur, at least at this point. Has there been any discussion with the public schools? Someone mentioned to me earlier today that schools are not in session now, but they, you know, they're going to be starting in a couple of weeks, but there's, you know, deer and, you know, most people are scared of, of the coyotes just hanging around school grounds and some of the larger fields that they have. Has there been any discussion with the superintendent at all?
I'm not, I personally haven't had any direct communication with the local school districts, and I don't believe anyone on the commission has. That's certainly a group we're willing to reach out to. And at this point, you know, my suggestion- Um, and at this point, you know, my suggestion would be if any individual schools are concerned, they may want to contact animal control directly and see if there's different hazing, um, methods that can be used to try and repel the animals from school grounds. And if not, then talk about other steps.
Okay. Okay. Now, do you think that, you know, in areas where there's one, where there's more of an issue? So for example, you know, if an area is a four and another area is a one, do you think that by working with the area that's a four, that it will be helpful to that area? Or do you think that they will find their way over, whatever type of animal it is? So for example, th- does it make sense to, to, um, haze or target a specific neighborhood that's having more of an issue than another? I mean, forget about the regional cooperation, but within, within the city limits, do you think that that's something that's viable?
The few studies that I read, um, after getting the request about coyotes, I all suggested that targeting is a good idea. Um, and one way that communities have been able to target is that an initial effort is made to create either a hotline or a centralized location where people can report human animal conflicts, whether coyote or otherwise. And that provides a timestamp, a location and something like that. So that allows the city then to know where the concentrations are. And then if there are specific sub-populations or individuals that need to be dealt with, either hazing or through other techniques, then the city can target its efforts to be most effective. And that seems to be the approach that most municipalities have taken, at least initially.
Okay. Um, I'm sure if we reached out to some, uh, to some areas, uh, they will definitely, uh, volunteer. Um, I can give you a couple of names already. Um, so, you know, a- a- another question, even if we were to build, you know, the, where, I, I was under the impression that we're building a, a bridge at the Rouge and six ninety-six. It's gonna have an underpass for pedestrians. But is that going to be safe or will the wildlife find that path? And, you know, is there anything that we can do to try to keep wildlife out of that path? So, you know, someone's not walking through this tunnel or, um, you know, some area and then they get, you know, randomly, I don't know, startled, attacked. Um, you know, maybe that's something you can look into unless you already have some suggestions. You can work with our engineering area, but, um, you know, I think that in general, you know, as it said, we know that there's a problem. Some people, you know, based on your server results, it sounds like most people wanna live harmoniously with all of these animals. But then you do have the people who are, you know, scared to leave their children outside and, and their pets outside and, you know, to say, well, don't leave them alone. I, I don't know if that's the best solution. I think there's definitely something that, um, we need to figure out and, um, you know, I, I encourage you to, to continue your work, you know, we're here to help. But I definitely think that we need to figure out something to do with, um, as I mentioned, you know, the deer, they're not that dangerous. They, they, you know, can dent your car pretty badly. But coyotes are definitely becoming more, um, I don't think, I don't, I don't wanna say friendly, but they're more, they're more likely to, you know, pop into someone's porch or, or patio even while people are outside. So I think we definitely need to address some of those issues. Um, but I look forward to continue to working with you and hopefully we can find some type of solution quickly. Um, so some of these residents can, uh, enjoy their, their backyards and some of the nature in Southfield without having to be scared of these uh, coyotes, if you will. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President. Uh, I most definitely, uh, agree that we need an education effort. Um, eventually I would like to see a community referendum, a non-binding referendum on the ballot, uh, asking people, uh, to, um, weigh in on whether, uh, wildlife, uh, particular deer should be culled. I think it's, uh, important to point out, and again, this is part of the, uh, education effort, that, um, culling deer is not necessarily a bad thing. It is actually good for the surviving deer, uh, as overpopulation, uh, is, uh, de- a detriment, um, our urban deer herd. Um, on the coyote, by a strange, uh, coincidence, um, I was called to Edward's Avenue this afternoon over, um, an issue that a homeowner was having. And as I left her house, uh, a coyote wandered along Edward's Avenue in front of me. And that, this is at five-twenty in the afternoon. Um, and I n- n- had an earlier report, uh, of a neighbor there whose, um, dog was, um, bitten by a coyote. It was a medium-sized dog, so it did not, um, uh, fatally injured the dog, but the, um, uh, the, the mother coyote had some pups and the, um, family dog wandered over to, I guess, say hello, um, or investigate. Um, and I've heard on Edward's Avenue from other residents about, uh, the, the coyotes in that part of the city as well as in, uh, Ca- uh, um, uh, Cranbrook neighborhood. So we have, um, I think we're, we're definitely seeing, um, a greater increase. Uh, personally, um, my feeling is that, uh, as coyotes get more bold, that they're really not compatible with neighborhood life, um, and that they should be, uh, tracked and euthanized. I know that would not be popular with, uh, some folks, but, uh, at the same time, uh, these are basically wild dogs and they do hunt in packs. A- and, um, as has been mentioned in the report, which was again very good, second time I've heard it, um, the coyotes can get more, um, acclimated to human presence. We certainly see this with deer. Uh, many times and, and I think everyone knows, has had the same experience, you come up upon a deer and it looks at you as if to say, what do you want? Uh, or what are you looking at? Um, they really don't, uh, unless you get close, they don't, um, really, uh, run off immediately. And I think, um, uh, the final thing is that I would urge the council to pass a resolu- or pass an ordinance about not feeding, um, wildlifes other than birds. Um, part of the problem with feeding wildlife, it, it also draws rats as, um, food that's left out encourages, uh, other vermin. So that, uh, would conclude my, um, comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Administrator Zorn, did you wanna comment on this at all?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Madam President. We will take the various comments and move them through of the city's process, in particular, starting defining some of the roles, uh, animal control, the education opportunities, uh, education, um, from our resident handbook to our social media, to our city webpage. Um, the role that Parks and Rec and the library will both play in various education efforts. I think there's some merits in preparing materials for the school district. Um, I've got a short list of options as, as we go through this. I did wanna comment, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum touched on it. Uh, MDOT currently is rebuilding the bridge under, um, which goes over I, uh, six ninety-six. And that has been a long-term goal to have that wildlife corridor along the Rouge, uh, river from ten to twelve mile. Um, so we will, uh, continue to, uh, do our, uh, work on this and, and come back and, uh, speak with, uh, council leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree, we've had a very, uh, interesting and informative, um, presentation and some of our takeaways. Again, uh, like the mayor said, one of the things we can do is defer to our, our city attorney and, uh, see if we can come up with some kind of ordinance that would, uh, say that we should not be feeding the wildlife. And, uh, the suggestions that our city administrator Zorn just made. And if, and if we feel that we need to meet on this particular topic, we can always call a meeting and discuss it even further. It seems like there's a lot here, a lot of meat that we need to digest. But we also have to come up with some solutions immediately for our, uh, communities because, um, they're being overtaken right at this point with, uh, coyotes and we need to come up with some solutions for everyone. So I, I do agree with the hotline to at least let us know where the sightings are so that we can target those areas with a more immediate, um, so- solution, whatever that may be, because, uh, our public safety is number one. We don't wanna wait until someone is hurt or injured and then do something when we can do something now. So, um, whatever we need to do, we should, we should make sure that we go ahead and, and do it. So, uh, with that, I just wanna say thank you. This was a very, very good, uh, presentation. Is anyone else on the call have any other comments or anything that they'd like to, to say to Mr. Schaefer and Ms. Merritt? Thank you so much for your time this evening. We really appreciate it. Okay, well, hearing none, we again say thank you and, uh, you, we'll, we will be getting back in touch with you with more suggestions and, uh, asking you your opinions on some things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Council. Our next item for discussion is the Southfield Police Department flock safety automatic license plate recognition.
Good evening, uh, Madam President, uh, members of council and members of community who are present. Uh, this is Police Chief Elvin Baron. Uh, with me in the room is Lieutenant Matthew Taylor and also Sergeant Blake Matatol. Where this is a, a follow-up action item from roughly two months ago, uh, when the Southfield Police Department came before council requesting authorization to purchase five block safety license plate readers. And this was a sixty-day free trial period that actually concluded on August seventh. And so I'm gonna do a quick overview of the project. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation that will be given by Sergeant Blake Matatol, uh, and then open up the floor for questions. So just as a reminder, uh, the license plate readers are strategically placed throughout the city. They're mounted on existing poles which are twenty-five feet from the edge of the roadway. The readers capture images of cars traveling as high as one hundred miles per hour and up to ninety feet away, and that's day or night. The readers also capture two lanes of traffic and provide information pertaining to vehicle make, model and color. Now, the data is stored in the cloud using an encryption system that both the federal government and the National Security Agency also use. The system delivers real-time notifications directly to our police officers and to our dispatch center. And it also has a capability of giving real-time notifications to our mobile devices. The data is used solely for investigative purposes, to provide evidence and to assist in located wanted suspects and also missing persons. And I'll give you an example, it's always important to share examples with the community. Some of you saw a recent story roughly two weeks ago where I held a press conference because we had made arrests of two armed and dangerous coffees who we've learned, found out they were targeting cities in southeast Michigan. Well, it was the block safety automatic license plate readers that alerted us to their presence where police officers were able to make an immediate response, uh, and make those res- arrests, resulting in, again, two guns being taken off the street from two dangerous individuals. And so the system also allows for sharing technology of information with other departments. For example, Detroit is equipped with this particular, uh, system as well as several other surrounding agencies. And we're able to share information back and forth with each other. We've even done that during this, uh, trial period exercise. So the cost of the service for this device is thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The cost in- includes a two thousand five hundred per camera per year, one-time installation fee, uh, of two hundred and fifty dollars. And we're looking to have this, uh, taken from our existing forfeiture funds. The current balance on our forfeiture funds is five hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and five cents. I repeat that, five hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-four and five cents. One thing I wanna ensure, counsel, ensure this community, this is not, I repeat, this is not facial recognition. This is strictly getting information by way of license plates that are reported in the system as stolen, as wanted fugitives or missing persons. And again, we have been very effective in that. And I'll turn it over to Sergeant Matatol, uh, to move down the PowerPoint. So if we can bring the PowerPoint up, please, at this time. I think they still. And let us know if there's any technical difficulties. We'll, we'll just continue on.
Rick, Rick, if you could hit the slide to start the PowerPoint. Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Blake Matatol. I'm Sergeant, Southfield Police Department. And, uh, the chief captured a lot of this, uh, stuff in his presentation. Uh, this is what the camera looks like. It's a Falcon camera. It's approximately ten inches by four and a half inches. And as the chief said, it has the ability to capture vehicles traveling of up to a hundred miles per hour. Let's switch to the next, uh, slide if you could. This is out of Cobb County Police Department. Uh, they were able to, to test these cameras out, utilize them. And within six months utilizing, there was a sixty percent reduction in crime. Uh, you can receive over a hundred and twenty hot, uh, hits on average per hour. And there are six hundred and fifty plus agency relationships utilizing this data that can be shared. Switch to the next slide, please. The cameras we are currently using are affixed to existing poles. Uh, they're, these cameras are solar powered or they can be actually hardwired into, uh, electrical devices. Also, Flock does provide a, uh, solar-powered, uh, flock pole that we can utilize if needed. Switch to the next slide, please. Block license plate readers, uh, can pick up on vehicles with, uh, temporary plates, uh, no plated at all. Can also pick up on plates that are covered. Uh, it picks up on state detection and it, and it can capture up to two lanes of traffic by utilizing one, uh, camera. Next slide, please. Block cameras do have the ability to capture daytime, uh, footage as well as nighttime footage of reflective pl- plates. This next slide shows a case study, uh, where a, a child was abducted within a five and a half period of time. Block was able to locate that vehicle and, and come up with the, uh, child that was returned or reunited to her mother. So like we said, we've had the cameras for the last two months on a trial period. Uh, these are the stats that we've come up with. We've recovered over six, uh, stolen vehicles. We've been, uh, made five arrests, two firearms were recovered. Violation Controlled Substance Act, uh, which is narcotics, uh, arrest. Uh, we've used it, utilized it to assist us. Uh we've used it, utilized it to assist us in uh assisting other departments around the area. As the chief touched on, uh Detroit has these cameras, Chesterfield Township has these cameras, Dearborn has these cameras, so we're able to provide them with information as well as uh provide Lathford Village with information of vehicles that travel through our area. Uh during this time, uh we've had cam- nineteen stolen plate hits, uh eight missing uh persons, ten sex offender hits, six warrant hits, and over fifty-six vehicle hits. Some of the proprietary features, it's direct integration with our current Axon body cameras and fleet system. They have a lifetime maintenance and support uh included in which is in subscription price. Uh we have the ability to share our databases across law enforcement national on a national level. And like we said, third has the ability to capture two lanes of traffic at utilizing one camera. Initial cost is twenty-five hundred dollars per camera. The initial uh physical impact is thirteen seven fifty. It includes a two hundred and fifty dollar install per camera. And our future intent with this is to possibly have a program expansion and obtain additional cameras in the future. It also allows us to enter into multi-jurisdictional agreements where we can share this information. That concludes the PowerPoint. I'll turn it back over to the chief.
I thank you, Sergeant, uh for the presentation. And one thing I want to add uh before uh opening it up uh for questions is that uh there are no maintenance costs associated uh with this product. All of the maintenance, if there's an issue that develops, are covered under the prices that we've already presented to this to this honorable body. And with that, I open the the floor for questions.
Thank you again for that uh presentation, uh chief. All right, we'll start with you, uh Councilman Brightwell. Okay, uh Councilman Cruz.
Sorry, I was on mute. I have nothing. I think it's a great thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell, yes?
Yeah, I was, the mute buddy was playing hide and seek with me. Um I have uh I'm I'm definitely uh uh support this and the uh two-month trial was very impressive with the results that you got. Uh so that shows us that uh for twelve months, the uh the number should be fairly extensive. Um but I do have a question. Uh I'm not sure if Austin is on or what. Um Austin i- is if the money, the money that's coming out of uh you indicated that some of it is coming out of the uh drug forfeiture fund and the other is coming out of the fund balance. Um is the money is being re- being put back into the drug forfeiture fund? The way we did, we are right, the way they write up red, seemed like the money was being put back into the drug drug forfeiture fund, and we were kicking it out of the uh fund balance. And and you, I'm not sure Austin is on or not, but I would like to get an answer to that. And the other question is, and this is for Austin also, you could probably also land. Can we get a get a reading or printout of how much we have dipped into the fund balance thus far this year? So otherwise, chief, I I think that this is a good good project uh product. And just the uh the results we got for two months trial is very impressive. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um uh Councilman Hoskins?
Uh thank you. Uh I I have no uh no questions on this.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Um when when you look at the the trial period statistics, under camera hits, it says missing person, sex offender, uh that, you know, that we they found, they got hits, but it was that not, if this is not facial rec- recognition, would that be through the license plate of those people?
Yes, sir. So when a sex offender is identified, uh intended as an individual who we will say the police are looking for regardless of agency, that information is entered into the law enforcement information network. And if they have a known vehicle uh that's registered to them uh or anybody associated with them, that information is loaded into the system, which is the result of the the hits that we get.
Got it. Okay, so then also with the hits, there's, you know, nineteen stolen plates, fifty-six stolen vehicles, but then there were only six vehicles recovered. Is that because they may have gone into like another jurisdiction, or you just didn't know where they went after they were found in the camera?
Right, and remember, this is an an investigative tool. So once these vehicles enter into our our city, the communications and officers get a notification, they would immediately proceed to that area and begin looking for those vehicles. Some vehicles pass directly through our city uh without stopping. Some do stop, let's say, at a gas station uh in a nearby in relation to that camera apartment, a home, and then we're able to further that investigative process. And then, as you know, we're very responsible in this police department as relates to what vehicles we're going to pursue. As you remember, one of the first things I did is come into the Southfield Police Department was put more restrictions on our vehicular pursuit policy. And so it's very important that we just don't I think it's important that uh council understands that uh some of these cars that may pop up, we may not necessarily chase as it relates to uh community safety uh in those in those situations.
Right, okay. So so then the other the other question I have is with with the proprietary features. It says it has direct integration with the current body cameras and fleet system. So does that mean that um if the body ca- that the body cameras can pick up like uh if they they're out or they're driving around and you're looking for a specific license plate, it will alert them immediately if they they're driving in front of a a car that you're looking for?
Yes, and Lieutenant actually wants to take this one second. Lieutenant Dr. Taylor?
Good evening. Yes, that's your question. Axon is the sole partner with Black Block Safety. Uh Axon is also the company that produces our fleet and body cameras that we use. So with Axon, all the videos that are recorded with the body camera as well as the fleet uploaded to evidence.com. That's the website that Axon uses. All the images and data related to all the uh information captured on the cameras can be directly uploaded to that same website for evidence purposes and investigation purposes. And Axon just also released that their new or their their new fleet camera have the technology to incorporate flock safety's technology so that the individual cameras in each vehicle can become license plate readers. And they're the only company that is partnered with Axon in that in that system that we use.
So would that be real-time, or is that only once, you know, like, for example, I know when once the officers drive into the garage, everything gets uploaded. So is that the same case that it's uploaded and then they can search, or is it real-time based on their body cameras or with their fleet recognition?
So they would upload it to evidence.com. That's more for an inv- investigative purposes? Is that what you're asking for as far as the uploading?
Yeah, yeah, you know, is it real-time, or is it is it really just used after the fact?
For the uploading of the um evidence to evidence.com is after the fact. That doesn't upload right away because it's the vehicles do have to return to the station to connect to the network? If that helps answer your question?
Yes.
And but however, when the fleet cameras are being utilized as LPRs in the future, it'll be the same thing as current, we'll get um the hits real-time, meaning they'll go directly to the police officers MDTs or computers in their ca- vehicles, as well as their mobile devices if they have that set up. And it also goes, the information will um real-time go to our dispatch center who can broadcast it over the radio in case officers outside of the vehicles are busy on other uh dispatch trunks.
Okay, it do they have uh a a real-time option for for fleet or body cameras?
As far as
The 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 license plate detection?
For the fleet, yeah. It's it not for the body cameras.
Okay, but that's something that we may want to do later on down the line, not not necessarily right now.
Yeah, we're not looking to do that right now. That's just the technology that they recently released with their new fleet cameras. But that's not something we're um looking at at this very moment.
Okay. Um and it said that it also it looks at um, what is it, like, their, you know, license plate, day or night, um is that you know, what happens if someone has, you know, sometimes people put like covers over their license plates or you know, like shades and things like that. Can it read through those, or is there something that would potentially stop it?
So what they have is a pro- uh patented proprietary machine that um what they say is vision to analyze vehicle license plate. It recognizes the state of the plate, the color, the type, the make, and also objects on the vehicle such as roof racks, unique handicaps, et cetera, and they ba- it's based off of image analytics and not necessarily just the car registration with the plate. So again, as far as technology goes, it's well over my head, but it captures a picture of the vehicle and it can tell you the type of vehicle, even if it doesn't have the plate.
Cool. Okay, well, I'm all for it. I think uh I I'm I'm impressed with your uh your not intimate knowledge of this uh technology. So I'm, I think this is a great tool that we can continue using. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Banks?
Um I have no questions. I'm in favor of this um proposal. Thank you.
Okay, great. I am also in favor of it, so and no questions. Thank you so much for this presentation. Um and we'll move this forward. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, and thank you, uh members of co- of council as well.
Okay. Our next item is the approval of Evergreen Farmington sanitary drain, chapter twenty, section four seventy-one agreement.
Hello, good evening, Council President and everyone else attending our meeting this evening.
Hi.
This is Lee Schultz, Southfield City Engineer. And the Water Resources Commissioner's Office, or WRC, has presented the city with the new four seventy-one agreement for the Evergreen Farmington sanitary drain. This information in a nearly complete form was previously presented to council July twentieth of two thousand and twenty when council authorized the chapter twenty drain petition. At that meeting, WRC stated the new agreement for the chapter twenty drain would require additional action to enter into a new service agreement. So this evening, we've brought the WRC team back to review some of the history and the corrective action plan included in the agreement. Uh we have Tim Minor joining us this evening with Applied Sciences Incorporated. And then we also have Ben Lewis joining us just by phone, who is with WRC. And Tim was going to start a presentation, whether you um control that or you turn that over to Tim to control from his end. It's your choice.
Lee, uh IT nor- normally will control the presentation. They would just say next slide.
Okay.
Or this is
That's fine.
This is not the right presentation. Give give us one second.
Okay.
Uh give us one second. Does they, do they have the presentation? Because I know originally it was an issue with them sending a PDF instead of the PowerPoint with that presentation?
Uh we do have the presentation ready to go.
Okay, so would it be for uh
Mister Tim Minor.
Minor? Uh give me one second. Okay, there we go. And uh Tim, once you get done, if you could just change the presenter back to to uh Rick, Greg, if you Thank you.
All right, I I can s- just give me a moment to get this uh sharing properly. Not quite familiar with WebEx. Some others. Okay, I think I see what to do. Are you seeing a a title screen right now?
Yes, this is Evergreen Farmington sanitary drain.
Good, and you're you're seeing the same thing as me. All right.
Okay.
Uh thank you for having me here this evening. My name, like like Lee said, is is Tim Minor and with Applied Science Incorporated. Uh we're an engineering firm that that supports WRC's work in in Evergreen Farmington. Uh one thing you may notice, uh i- if you you have someone come and speak to you about Evergreen Farmington before, uh we would have called it the Evergreen Farmington uh sewage disposal system, or SDS. Uh we're now calling it the Evergreen Farmington sanitary drain. Uh that that is part of this this uh formation of the chapter twenty drain that uh Southfield was a petitioning community on. So uh Evergreen Farmington sanitary drain is uh basically the same footprint and one in the same as uh Evergreen Farmington sewage disposal system. It reflects the new governance. So uh the Evergreen Farmington is made up of all or part of fifteen communities. Those communities are listed on the the right-hand side of this slide. Uh as far as how it looks looks in the world, uh the left-hand side, left-hand side of this slide gives a map. Um you can see the communities are shaded in in different colors, so you can kind of pick up municipal boundaries. I'm sure you're most interested in your own community, which you could find in the the lower right-hand corner of this map. Uh the black lines are the uh route of the interceptor system. So these are the the large diameter sewers that the county operates and maintains uh that carries the the sewage that is collected at the local level I in in your own local sewer system. Uh one thing I did want to note about Southfield in particular is it is one of the communities that is actually served in two systems. So the the very eastern edge of the city of Southfield is served by the neighboring system to the east. Uh tha- that's why, you know, the footprint of this uh the the Southfield area here doesn't quite match up with the footprint that you know as as your city boundary. There's a small uh sliver about, you know, a little less than a mile wide uh that flows eastward instead of into the Evergreen Farmington. So the the Evergreen Farmington is, you know, a a about uh, you know, seventy seventy years old or or sixty sixty-seven years old, just going on on seventy. Uh it it originally formed in in nineteen fifty-eight and early nineteen sixties was physically constructed. So uh that that is timed, if you if you think about when the the area grew, that is timed with with the significant growth in population, uh so that the area needed sewer services and the Evergreen Farmington provided those. It grew incrementally uh over time as as areas developed. So uh big big growth in in the early nineteen sixties and then small incremental growth even even up to today today as as there's new development. Uh so there there are, uh this is a sanitary uh sewer system, meaning it is carrying the the wastewater, you know, from from the the drains of your home, your toilet, sink, shower, all of that. Um but there are some some non-santer- sanitary flows that make it into a system. No matter how tight we try to make a pipe, uh water can intrude through that pipe or through through cracks, fissures, and joints, and and we get clear water in the system as well. Uh when we have uh rain, that clear water can increase. So there are some non-sanitary flows. In Evergreen Farmington, uh we do see a a rainfall response, as is common. Uh and and it is, it's 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 typical rainfall response for a system of this age. Uh but it does create some uh issues throughout the system where uh the the pipes can reach or exceed their carrying capacity. And that uh, you know, was was really flagged in the nineteen eighties, uh when the system was, you know, about twenty years old. Uh we started to see those issues. And uh really, the 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 big issue that we are working uh against is the sanitary sewer overflow. So this is a a situation where the san- sanitary sewer gets overloaded to the point where where flow exits the sewer instead of being being transported downstream. Uh i- in the late nineteen eighties, nineteen eighty-eight, and and actually, an abatement order was was issued by then the by then the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. That organization has changed names a a few times since nineteen eighty-eight. They're currently the organization known as Eagle. So uh back in nineteen eighty-eight, an abatement order was was issued to uh order that the sanitary sewer overflows are addressed. Uh shortly thereafter, there was a intermunicipal contract signed. This is the contract that we're still working under today. Uh the this this contract provides for the operation of the sewage disposal system. Uh the the main reason we're looking for a a new contract right now is to reflect that change in governance from a sewage disposal system to a chapter twenty drain. And uh you know, i- in addition to kind of getting us ready for the county to operate, maintain the system today and into the future, uh this this new form of government governance does a couple other things. Uh one is it provides a board. Uh instead of just being a a county-operated drain, it's now operated by a drain board. So like the, you know, communities do have a board that they can go to uh if they have any concerns or issues. Uh really, really puts some control uh i- in into the core of the communities where the where they have a board that can hear their their issues. And then it also defines new capacities for the communities. A number of the Evergreen Farmington communities actually have their own actions from the state. And in order to solve their own internal wet weather concerns, uh new capacities are needed to allow them to transport more flow into the system. Getting a little ahead of myself. I'm talking about today and and the the uh the formation of the drain, and I still have a little more history to go through. So in the in the nineteen nineties, those uh those abatement orders kind of came to uh fruition where where some projects were built. These were uh pump stations and relief sewers to carry more flow. Uh tho- those sorts of projects. It it did reduce the sanitary sewer overflows. They were good projects, but some still remain. There were some areas of the system that were untouched by those projects in the late nineteen eighties and early nineteen nineties. In two thousand and four, the time for the the uh abatement order had had run its course and the effort had been done that could be done. Uh and and the DEQ at that point issued an administrative consent order. This is a really similar instrument to the abatement order. Uh it just uh is is a different different kind of document that that is, you know, signed by the Attorney General's office and insists on some corrective action happening. That document outlined uh a a few things. It uh it was a outline a short-term corrective action plan. This is an opportunity to try to solve the wet weather problems by reducing the flow that came into the system. The communities were really active in this. The county was active. Uh really, the communities and counties did everything they could to reduce the 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 peak wet weather flow that would come into the system, trying to solve the problem at the source. Unfortunately, tha- that was not uh effective in eliminating the sanitary sewer overflows uh in part because one of the source sources is uh a private, a private source where footing drains are tied in. You know, be private meaning a a source that's on the the private property. Uh and neither the communities or the county were were able to really affect that source in in any uh large way. Uh so after the short-term corrective action plan, uh eliminated all the source that could be eliminated, the long-term corrective action plan kicked in and phase one projects were built. In in a couple of slides, I have a map that's going to show you those phase one projects and where they sit in the system. E- Eagle now, MDQ has become Eagle in this intervening time. Uh Eagle uh in twenty nineteen provided an amended administrative consent order. This this amended order really laid the groundwork for what we are are about to do. Uh because it provided provision to increase outlet capacity. Uh the Evergreen Farmington uh outlets all of its flow to a downstream system that's operated by the Great Lakes Water Authority uh and eventually to the Great Lakes Water Authority-operated wastewater treatment plant. So uh this this latest administrative consent order paved the way for Evergreen Farmington's wet weather issues to be solved by uh additional capacity in those downstream systems. It also modified the correction corrective action plan's schedule uh to to give the time to really construct the the projects and negotiate the capacity uh that that we need to in order to do uh the work that we're set up to do right now. Oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. Here we go. So uh next next thing in the timeline is the future. Uh obviously, we don't completely know what the future will bring, but we know a few things that are are coming up. Uh one is, right now, we're actively refining the corrective action plan. These plans usually start out conceptually and as design happens, uh you know, through basis design and then design, the plan really comes into focus. That's where we're at right now. The plan is coming into focus. Uh but one thing that we see is absolutely needed, and we thank Southfield for for being one of the petition communities, is this new intermunicipal service agreement or the four seventy-one agreement. Looking to next year, there there will be a sale of bonds for the corrective action plan. I have more details on that in a few slides. And then uh the the construction will start. Uh we have a a current expiration date of twenty twenty-four for the administrative consent order. Uh i- it's possible that that may change. You know, uh there is a uh regional push for regional cooperation. Uh so when that happens, Eagle may again look and try and align schedules to to allow that regional cooperation happen. All right, so this is the slide that I I promised was coming up soon. Long-term correction corrective action plan, uh phase one. So throughout the system, sixty-three million dollars was invested and and seven projects were constructed. And they're they're shown on the map uh in these these symbols with the the green uh SSO point that has been addressed uh by these projects. So we've seen uh since these projects were built, we've seen a reduction in sanitary sewer overflow in in the Evergreen Farmington, which is is great news. It really uh protects our waterways. There are still two uh red dots on here, so these are are known constructed sanitary sewer overflow points. Part of what Eagle had agreed to when we uh initiated the long-term corrective action plan is this phased approach where first we would solve uh what what were called the upstream uh locations, these green dots, and then move to the downstream locations. And and I I suppose I should have said it when I was like we were looking at the map before. In general, uh flow in the Evergreen Farmington moves from north to south and from west to east. So from the top of the page to the bottom and from the left towards the right. Uh so wh- when I call these two red dots downstream locations, you may be wondering, you know, uh clearly, one of them is in that that far south and east location, but the other one is not. Uh the reason we consider that to be a a downstream location as well is uh that that red dot kind of in the center of the map is located at a pump station, the Walnut Lake Pump Station number one uh that has an operational parameter that looks towards the outlet and says, when the outlet is overwhelmed, turn the pump station off and then sanitary sewer overflow will immediately commence at that location. So while it's it's uh isolated physically from the outlet, the sanitary sewer or overflow there is happening because of what's happening at the outlet. So that's why we consider these two to be the downstream locations. And Eagle recognized that uh the system is complex and what is done at the green spots may affect what needs to be done for the red spots. So uh that that's why they allowed a phased approach to be adopted and uh gave us time to really fully understand the impact of that green, the those green dots on the the work of the red dots. So the 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 plan has been in in development and it's uh this this graphic is is showing some of the the features that uh really drove the plan. Uh regional cooperation, uh really, we got together with uh, you know, the Evergreen Farmington communities, Eagle, Great Lakes Water Authority, DWSD, and and found a solution that is is a a real win-win solution. Actually, we we've even been calling it a win-win-win. So, you know, uh Evergreen Farmington solves its wet weather issue. Uh the river uh is is cleaner because we're we're addressing sanitary sewer overflows really in some of the the upstream reaches of the Rouge River. And then uh Great Lakes Water Authority and DWSD uh benefit through the the uh purchase of capacity because they can have have money to invest in uh projects within their system. And they've been working with Eagle to identify those projects and uh they've found ones that are actually going to more than offset the extra flow from Evergreen Farmington. So uh really, it's it's a a case of 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 great cooperation. So uh it's it's a great story to be able to tell. Uh cost savings, uh in in the moment, I think in the next slide, I'm going to be showing you uh some of the thought that went into selecting the projects. Uh thi- this cost savings is really looking at what could have been. Uh originally, the the project uh concept for this this site, uh this this kind of last last uh run of projects was storage. So storage is a uh a build a tank and and uh bu- build a tank and and uh operate it for the foreseeable future and, you know, have the expense of of building and and running that tank. So uh it it can be costly and uh, you know, by by going with a different solution, which is transporting downstream, we we've saved uh millions over the life of that tank. Uh we we've also looked at uh this in terms of value of investment. Uh by increasing the outlet capacity of uh the Evergreen Farmington, we have uh, you know, secured secured capacity that that's going to uh service into the future. And we we really lower the risk of operational failure. If we had built a tank, um you know, that tank needs to be operated, maintained. Uh with additional transport capacity, it it's a fairly passive system. So uh we we always look to to mitigate the risk of operational failure, and this project certainly does that. And then finally, environmental impact. I touched on this a little bit when I was talking about the regional collaboration. This is one of the wins. So uh we 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 address our problem and our problem uh really benefits the the Rouge River uh tremendously by reducing sanitary sewer overflow into it. So this is that slide that I had mentioned a moment ago. Uh so we had two two potential projects. There's always more than one solution to a project. So uh concept one was add storage. This would uh satisfy the requirements of the administrative consent order. Uh for for a large storm, the excess flow goes into a tank. And then after that storm, that excess flow is uh bled back out of that tank into the system and sent down the line. The the other is this additional out capacity where the large flow is is transported down for treatment. So look at these uh these uh five categories that we looked at. You know, they both they both meet the letter of of what's required, right? They address sanitary sewer overflows. That's that's what we're required to do. But the tank uh has a lower environmental and and public health benefit because it can get full. If we have a a rain rainfall that causes a high system flow that we store and it's followed almost immediately by another rainfall, which can happen. Uh that tank's already full and we're right back to the situation where we were already where we're making overflow. The state would find that to be uh a a reasonable thing. They would probably not not uh levy a an enforcement decision on that. But it does uh not protect environmental and public health as well as a transport option. Uh value of investment, talked a little bit about the the additional cost of constructing a a tank. Uh the these tanks are are quite expensive to build. So if we can avoid that and still address the concern, that that's a great thing. Uh value investment over time, operation and maintenance. The the uh project two uses infrastructure that's basically already there to to solve the problem. There's some upgrades that need to happen, but we're really just uh using the pipeline that's there already. Um, you know, nu- number one, we're going to be operating, maintaining a new new facility. Uh and then uh risk of failure, already touched on this as well. When we're operating a new facility, that facility may uh may fail. So uh when we're we're operating this reliable, tested and true facility, uh the risk of failure is is much, much lower. So all that kind of added up to a decision to to go with number two. That decision was not made in a vacuum a- at all. You know, uh WRC has engaged with the the communities at at a number of junctures. Uh there's a quarterly meeting where all this has been presented at. There's a monthly steering committee meeting for this effort. Uh there was a a survey. Some of you on this call may have participated in it. There was there was a survey to kind of uh assess the uh acceptance and tolerance of of different solutions, source removal, all the way to to what we ended up selecting. Uh so all all the input has been very valuable in making a decision that is is well-informed and uh really, again, embraces that regional cooperation. So what what we ended out with and and what we're uh in design on right now are are really, it's really a four-part project that all adds up to uh conveyance to uh Great Lakes Water Authority. So, you know, one one of the large pieces is purchasing additional Great Lakes Water Authority uh outlet capacity. That's that's been negotiated. It's not been finalized yet. It's still in the works, but it's very close. Uh everybody is in agreement that this this will happen. In order to take advantage of that additional capacity, there are a few infrastructure upgrades that need to happen uh i- you know, in three areas. Uh one is all the way up at Walnut Lake Pump Station. So uh that's mainly a controls uh upgrade. You remember I I talked about how Walnut Lake Pump Station currently i- is controlled off of what's happening at the downstream part of the system. We need to modify those controls because we're we're going to be trying to drive flow out of the system instead of making overflow up at the pump station. Uh when we do that, uh it has kind of a trickle-down effect. We're going to be sending more flow from the pump station into the Evergreen Interceptor, which does run through Southfield. Uh so we need to make some changes along the Evergreen Interceptor to to get it ready to to handle a higher peak flow rate. Then finally, uh down at Eight Mile, there's another pump station at uh Eight Mile just east of Berg called the Eight Mile Pump Station. It's being modified to deliver more flow downstream and its downstream pipeline gets modified too. So uh really, that's the the four main pieces of this project. So uh cost allocation had was actually established in two thousand and eleven. There was a series of meetings, I think it was nine meetings, where the the interested members of the communities uh met with the county and uh really, it was it was a lot of listening and reaction on the county's part to what the communities wanted to to try out. And and we landed on a cost allocation that all the communities uh found to be agreeable. And that's been used for the the projects uh since since that time. So all the phase one projects were allocated on this method and all the phase two projects will also be allocated. The 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 cost allocation method does take into effect the location of the issue. So because this is a downstream uh end of system issue, all the communities participate in this project. Some of the earlier projects, because they're further up in the system, they only uh had participation from a s- a select subset of communities. All all of those projects were upstream of Southfield, so uh Southfield actually did not have participation in the phase one projects. So this this part might feel a little new to you, but uh definitely wanted to impress you. This is not new. It it's been in place for ten years. Uh it's just this is the first time that this allocation method has uh been applied to a project that includes Southfield. So for this uh for this project, the the outlet conveyance project, uh Southfield is thirty-eight point one seven percent of of the project costs. So and, you know, if you skim up and down this list, you you'll probably recognize that that's tied very, very closely to the size of the communities. Southfield is uh one of the largest communities in the system and and contributes a large amount of the flow. So that thirty-eight point one seven uh percent uh applied to the 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 current total estimated project cost really yields what you see in this table. So there's a a lump sum payment option and some So there's a, a lump sum payment option and some communities may opt for that and some may not. Uh, but i- if you do, the, the Southfield shares, uh, about twenty seven thousand, seven hundred, twenty seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If, uh, you do opt for bond financing, the annual payments are estimated at one million, uh, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Under the service agreement, so this is really what we're here to talk about. Everything was kind of, uh, uh, background for this. And I've told you some of these things already, but you know, this, this new service agreement, it does provide, uh, for, uh, authority for regional operations. And that means operation of the, the pipeline, pump stations, all, all the Evergreen Farmington systems. It replaces the nineteen eighty nine inter municipal agreement that's currently in place. Uh, it does require approval of all fifteen customer communities. So, uh, it's ve- very important that we get that. Uh, honestly, I'm not, not on the legal side, so I'm not sure what the next step is if we don't get that. But we're hopeful, there's been a lot of support for this, uh, on the technical side and on the, the municipal government side already. So, uh, I think, I think we've actually gotten approval from half the communities at this point. So, uh, we're hopeful that, uh, we'll continue to see that positive reaction. Uh, it establishes new community capacities. So each community, uh, basically gets the capacity that they need to, to convey their flow, uh, for that, that peak event. The apportionment assessments are included. Those are cost allocation percentages, very much so the, the table that we just saw a couple of slides ago. In order to, uh, form the drain, the, the project is described, it's, it's the project that I just described to you. Current cost estimates are, are in there. Like I, I had said earlier, as the design comes together, everything will come into focus more. But we, we believe those, believe those cost estimates to be good. And, and we don't, we don't expect the cost to deviate too far from those. The current rate methodology will not change. So, you know, we talked about, um, the allocation ca- of costs for this project. There's actually the operation maintenance of the system that has its own methodology. There is, is no thought of changing that. This is your, your, uh, recurring, uh, charges, your shares for the, the sewage, uh, transport that, that you experienced, uh, for years now. So that methodology will remain in place. Uh, timeline, you know, w- we are really just, just kind of, uh, at the end of our community engagement, going into our community approval time. So, uh, you know, we, we, I talked a little bit about the engagement we've already had, where we have the recurring meetings, uh, and, and, and all of that. Now, now we're switching over to approval and, and going around a meeting with, uh, boards and councils to, to help that approval, uh, happens. And that's it. Can I answer any questions?
Uh, thank you. Lee, did you want to add anything else before we turn it over to council?
No, I think that Tim covered everything.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cruz, I'll start with you.
Yes, uh, Madam President, I have no questions whatsoever. That was such a thorough, uh, presentation that, uh, I think I have everything I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Frazier? Oh, I thought he had joined us. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, and I think I'll echo, um, Councilman Cruz. I don't, I don't think there's anything I can add. I think it was a very thorough presentation. I'm sure if any questions come up though, I know exactly who to talk to.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
I do have a couple of questions. How many years is the bond and do you know what the interest rate would be?
Oh, I suppose I should know that off the top of my head. Uh, I'm not the financial guy either. I know, we have Ben on the line. Ben, do you, do you know the answer to that question? You know, we, we.
Yeah, uh, Tim, I believe that's going to be a, uh, twenty year bond. And, uh, the interest rate right now is quite low. I couldn't tell you exactly what it is.
I, I think I heard two and a half percent. But again, not the, not the financial expert, but I think it was two and a half percent at twenty years, like Ben said.
Okay. And then, um, as it relates to the four seventy one agreement.
Yes.
Do we know what effect, uh, fed the federal infrastructure bill may have on this project, uh, particularly as it relates to Southfield?
Don't think we know that yet. Ben, were you interjecting there?
We don't know. I know that, uh, we will put this project as one of theirs, uh, projects, but we have not heard anything, uh, about getting any funding from that.
Is there a way we can, uh, try to pull some strings?
Certainly we can check into that. We'd get back to Lee and let her know where we're at with it.
Okay.
It has not been overlooked.
That, that's good. I was just, again, you know, I, I, it was a, a very thorough presentation. I do appreciate the, uh, the information and, um, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I have no questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yes, um, I appreciate it. The presentation was thorough, but there's one item in the write-up. Uh, Lee, you could probably answer this and I may be reading it wrong, but why didn't Southfield participate in twenty, twenty nineteen? Uh, in the, it says Southfield did not participate in the cost of the long-term cap plan phase one. Why didn't we do that?
Uh, let, let me, let me actually scroll back to the map and I think that, that can help answer that question. So, um, the, one of the factors in cost participation is that you actually send flow to or through the project. And i- if you look at the location of these green dots, uh, they are all upstream of the city of Southfield. So, so Southfield actually does not send any flow to or through those projects, therefore did not participate in those financially.
Okay, but, uh, one of the reasons why my question would be, we, we have the highest percent of the allocation. Uh, so as one of, uh, were we harmed by not participating or were we benefited by not participating or is it just neutral?
Well, I, I think you, you could think of it as benefit because of the sixty three million dollars that was already invested. No, none of that cost went to Southfield. But, uh, Southfield does get the benefit of being part of the system that has additional resiliency. So I, I think it's a net benefit to, to not have participated in, in that, that, uh, phase one set of projects.
Okay, okay, well, I, I take your word for it. Thank you. That, that's it for me. I appreciate it. It was a thorough, uh, presentation there.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Mr. Frazier.
Yes, I just couldn't get my, uh, microphone unmuted in time. I thought it was a very good presentation also. I have a couple of questions. One question is, uh, the allocation for the fifteen different cities has been calculated or, or will be calculated. But what happens when one of the cities has a major building project? You know, somebody builds a hotel. Do you have to go back through and do reallocation of the costs?
No, as a ma- matter of fact, the four seventy one agreement, one, once that allocation is set, does, does not allow for that. There was a effort, uh, made to project to the future. Uh, you know, population was estimated out to twenty fifty. We, we asked communities if they had any master plans that, that would include, uh, uh, denser build outs. So we did, uh, try to account for that when we were setting these allocation amounts.
Okay, and the other question that I have is, uh, how close are, is the, uh, system to being at capacity?
Well, uh, cur- currently at times it is over capacity. That's what results in sanitary sewage overflow. So the, this, uh, project for, for designs, design storm event condition will bring us back into capacity. So we're, we're currently, you, you could think of it as over capacity.
Okay, so as long as we don't have, uh, an outlier kind of a storm like we had about a month ago, it'll handle it?
Oh yeah, day, day in, day out, uh, we, we use less than a quarter of our contractual capacity with Great Lakes Water Authority.
Okay, that's it for me. Good, a good presentation.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, all my questions have been answered. A great presentation that has already been mentioned.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum. I had one last question.
Sure.
Um, looking at this cost allocation and since Southfield's doing thirty eight percent and Farmington Hills is at twenty eight percent, would it make sense instead of the Evergreen Farmington drain to call it Southfield Farmington drain?
So, uh, the, the, the name is quite historic. Uh, you know, the, the, the system formed, uh, with, with a interceptor that ran along Evergreen Road. Those named the Evergreen Interceptor. And then as, uh, another interceptor that served city of Farmington, or actually at them, that time Farmington Township, those named the Farmington Interceptor. And when they came together, they called it the Evergreen Farmington. That, that name is, is, uh, fairly well set in stone, uh, at this point.
Oh, well, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, alrighty, well then we'll move this forward, Lee. Is it any other, uh, information you'd like for us to share with us tonight?
No ma'am, that covers it. We're, we'll be looking to put this on the consent agenda for the next regular meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Uh, Madam President, um, can Mr. Minor, could you, uh, give me, give it back? Thank you.
Yes, have I, have I done that now?
Uh, give me one second. Uh, I think we should be all set. We're passing it back to Rick. I think we should be all set.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to our next item, which is the preliminary discussion regarding conversion of the existing Hawthorne Suites Hotel to the multiple family units at twenty six, seven hundred Central Park Boulevard.
Good, good evening, Madam Chair. This is Planner Crowe. I'm just waiting for the, uh, slide deck. If you can go to the next slide, please. We have, uh, petitioner Bonner Advisory Group represented by Luke Bonner today and his team. Um, they're looking at converting the, um, current Hawthorne Suites that's located at Central Park Boulevard in Eleven Mile into multi-family and use, utilizing the overlay development district rezoning, uh, to accomplish that. Next slide. This is a close up of existing conditions. Next slide. And, uh, preliminary site plan of what they're proposing. Next slide. I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Luke and his team, um, to walk you through, uh, some of the proposed renovations to the buildings. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have after their presentation. This is for discussion purposes only. Thank you.
Thanks Terry. And, uh, good evening, Madam President, members of council. My name's Luke Bonner, uh, with the Bonner Advisory Group. Uh, joined, uh, with my, uh, by my client, um, Brian Pritchard from TriCap Residential, um, based out of Chicago. Also with him is Rob Sanchez, Executive Vice President of Asset Management. I would try cap residential. We also have Wayne Chubb, uh, the architect, um, from Harbs and Hobbs and Black on the team as well. I'm really excited to, um, work on really, um, opportunistic, um, project here in the city of Southfield. Um, capitalizing on a great market, a really good community to work in. This property, um, as it sits today, is an extended stay hotel. That quite honestly, based on, on our research and experience, um, is probably, um, not been the best, um, property in, in the community. Um, in, in terms of, um, being productive. And, uh, we have a really nice opportunity, we feel, um, to acquire this property and create a more permanent, um, or long-term, um, housing situation. Um, that would, that would really cater to the community, um, towards professionals. Um, and also add a very, very nice, highly amenitized property in the community that, um, goes from sort of being inward and isolated almost to being more outward and more connected, uh, to the community. Um, what I'd like to do is, is, uh, let Brian Pritchard talk more about TriCap Presidential. The kinds of projects that they do, uh, what their expertise is and what they vision for, uh, for this property coming forward.
Hi, everybody. My name is Brian Pritchard. Thanks for your time this evening. Uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to present our project and our team to you. Uh, as Luke mentioned, uh, I am the owner and founder of, of TriCap Residential Group. I'm actually, company is based out of Chicago, but I was actually born and raised in the area in Troy, Michigan. And I'm currently a resident of Ann Arbor, so I'm, I'm pretty familiar with, uh, Southfield and the, and the surrounding communities. Um, I, I, this company started in twenty seven, or excuse me, two thousand and seven. Um, we are a, an owner and operator of multi-family properties throughout the Midwest, uh, and a little bit in the Southeast. We're currently active and own properties in seven states. Um, we do not, uh, we don't do any third party management, you know, anything that we work on. Um, we are both on the investment side and, and the operation side and, and all of the, um, fine folks that work at the properties are employees of our, our company as well. Uh, most of our properties are what we refer to as value add, which means that we're buying something that needs a little love. And we provide that in the form of, um, professional management and usually some form of, of renovation and, and enhancement to the property. In most cases, that is apartment interiors, uh, at common areas and amenities and any deferred maintenance or improvements we can make to signage, marketing and landscaping. Uh, and in most instances, that also includes a rebranding of the, of the, of the asset so that we can, um, present the more, uh, modern, professional, uh, uh, look and feel for the property that we, um, know that helps us attract great residents. Um, there's a, there's a, um, today we have about three thousand apartments. Um, we have about eighty employees, uh, most of which are onsite working on our properties. And then we have a small team in our corporate office that handles, um, management and, and developmental redevelopment opportunities such as this. Um, with this particular project, um, we are actually working and targeting a number of these type of opportunities. You know, there's the, um, with COVID, there's just a, a, a lack of business travel, particularly extended stay business travel. And, and if you're familiar with the hotel industry at all, they are in constant need of reinvestment and improvement in order to keep kind of, um, reshuffling themselves and moving them towards the, uh, the top of the, um, of the offering spectrum for this type of, uh, for this type of hotel. And that's not happening today, you know, because it's a lack of, uh, the lack of business travel and extended stay travel that's happening in the, uh, in the world. So there's a great opportunity for companies like us to take a, a property that while, albeit a little bit denser than, uh, maybe a new apartment community would be constructed today, really has all of the, um, qualities that we would look for in a, in a more, um, upper mid-scale apartment offering, uh, in the marketplace. And that's what we would look to do here is, is create a boutique and, and bespoke apartment community, um, predominantly one bedroom and some, and some one bedroom loft units that caters to a, uh, professional that's looking to, uh, live and work in this area. Uh, most likely does not, you know, is either single or, or divorced and doesn't have a, a family component with them. Um, so that's what we're looking to do. That's a little bit about our company and what we're looking to do with the property. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me individually or about our business. And I'm sure Luke, uh, and the rest of our team can answer more, uh, questions about the, uh, our plan as well.
Okay.
There, there are a few more slides if you, if you want to go through those quickly and then, and then wrap it up with, uh, questions.
Gentlemen, there, there are a few more slides if you, if you want to go through those quickly and then, and then wrap it up with, uh, questions and answers.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Um, the, uh, actually, if you go back to the first slide, if you don't mind, um, this is a shot of the, the, the main clubhouse area. Um, the, the renovations that we're proposing, um, throughout the property, you know, obviously extensive landscaping renovations, um, or, or enhancements, I should say, um, are definitely required. Um, asphalt, um, uh, replacement, um, the facades themselves will be per, um, ordinance. Um, a lot of, uh, a lot of stone, um, a lot of durable siding. Um, you know, hardy wood is, uh, is, is something that we're used to. Or, uh, or an equivalent, um, durable material from a siding standpoint. Obviously going through a painting, um, all of the units on the exterior. Um, you know, adding side amenities, um, such as a, a dog park, um, keeping the pool, creating barbecue areas. Um, uh, let me go to the next slide. So, um, rear view of the, uh, of the clubhouse, um, just another example of the areas that can be cleaned up, um, around the property. This obviously between landscaping, stone and a siding product here plus repainting. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so this is a front view of the, of the property. Um, you know, right now, the, you know, when I mentioned that the property is kind of isolated by itself, you know, a lot of that has to do with the fact that it's really closed off, you know, from an appearance standpoint, uh, between a row of heavy pines that really block the main clubhouse building, uh, plus the privacy fence along the sidewalk area or back of the sidewalk area that really blocks the viewpoint. Uh, really want to make, um, the clubhouse sort of a signature look, very welcoming, um, great curb appeal. But then just opening it up, uh, for people to see it and to create more of a comfortable environment for people to, um, walk through and, and buy the property as well. Next slide, please. Um, another example of, of how the units would look on the exterior, uh, between the, uh, between painting, uh, the siding material on the bottom level, uh, and more landscaping. Uh, next slide, please. Some more examples of different color palettes. Um, the idea, um, was, uh, recommended by, by planning to create, uh, more color texture throughout the property instead of like a monochrome look, um, throughout. So there's, there's, uh, various color opportunities as well. Next slide, please. And that's it. But we're happy to answer questions.
So just, uh, through the chair, this is Planner Crowe. This is just a discussion item. They will require rezoning. Um, they, they are looking for some initial feedback from council on their proposals. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll start with you, Mr. Fraser.
Yes, um, in your presentation, um, I guess I'm a little confused because I thought it was, they were for sale, but I hear rent and for sale, both. What, what is the, uh, uh, plan? And if, if they're for sale or for rent, what, what, uh, is the price points?
So these would be, um, for rent, not for sale. We would operate it as a, you know, uh, an active apartment community. Um, for our target pricing, you know, obviously this will be subject to us getting in there and leasing some actual apartments. Um, would be about nine hundred dollars for the, for the studio or, or smaller units and eleven hundred dollars for the larger units.
Okay. Okay, uh, that's all the questions I have for now. I might think of something. Uh, what's a price per square foot?
Uh, would that be the rental price per square foot or the?
Yeah, well, you said you weren't gonna sell them.
Oh yeah, I didn't know if you meant, um, from a, from an acquisition perspective. Um,
Probably a dollar thirty-one to a dollar seventy.
Yeah, a dollar fifty-ish, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, how many units are, would be at this, uh, at this property?
There are currently a hundred and forty-four and we would maintain the existing unit count.
Okay. And what is the square footage for one of them? Like for stu-, you said it's gonna be a studio and for a bigger one?
Yeah, you know, um, we'll do some actual measurements, the, based on the information that we currently have. The, the studio or, or smaller units are about five hundred and forty square feet and the larger units are eight hundred and forty square feet.
Okay, just one bedroom would be?
Yes, the, the larger units do have a lofted second bedroom or sort of live workspace.
Okay.
Which we think is a pretty attractive amenity and, you know, today's, uh, work from home environment.
Uh, how many of each unit type?
A one hundred and eight of the smaller units and thirty-six of the larger units.
Um, and okay, and I know you guys said you're doing, uh, uh, be doing some renovations. What, what type of renovations? Um, any amenity upgrades within those, um, in the, could you go into detail about those?
Yeah, sure. The, the, you know, the interior of the units, we can start with that. Um, they'll be given a more modern look, uh, and feel, uh, and this particular asset that'll include, um, um, uh, new cabinets, some new flooring throughout, new painting, lighting fixtures, you know, and, and most instances, this property included, there's a lot of what I would refer to as hotel amenities, meaning desks, drapes, uh, you know, uh, headboards, that type of thing. We would, we would de-hotel, uh, the, um, the property and make it more of an apartment that somebody would move their own furniture into. Um, and then as far as the exterior, uh, is concerned, as Luke mentioned, we'd be making exterior enhancements to the, to the buildings, painting and siding upgrades on all of the exteriors, um, landscaping improvements throughout. Um, the property is, currently has a, a pretty well amenitized, um, clubhouse and community area, including a pool. We would expand on those, uh, in particular, the, um, make sure that it has an adequate and, and usable fitness area. And then, and, you know, in the pool and outdoor areas, we would expand on those and create some, uh, trellis, uh, lighted outdoor grill, you know, more community amenities than, than what's there today.
Okay, um, what about, um, efforts to make it, um, more energy efficient, any energy improvements?
Yeah, sure. We usually typically will coordinate, um, both water saving and electricity, electricity saving measures in the form of low-flow faucets and showerheads. And then LED light fixtures and, you know, low, um, and even the site lighting, we'll take a look at and see if we can't, um, retrofit the site lighting to include LED fixtures.
Okay, all right, that's, uh, that's all the questions I have for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, yeah, just looking at this presentation, um, you know, this, this corner, this, this complex, these apartments definitely could use an upgrade. Um, I'm glad to see the, what you're proposing as a site changes. I think this would be, uh, welcomed in the city. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of this moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, to the, um, to the petitioner, is there a reason that you didn't consider condos for this corner? Versus apartments?
Uh, that's not what we do, I guess is the most, um, is the most basic reason for that. And, and secondarily, we, we don't think the units are really, um, set up for, um, force, a for-sale type product. What we see selling in the marketplace in a higher density, um, setting like this, today's world is large two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, even four-bedroom, uh, units. And in here, this is really geared and set up towards, um, singles, you know, smaller units, uh, than it is those larger family units. Um, and secondarily, you know, the other thing that we see mostly moving in the marketplace today, single family. You know, and again, we just don't have that type of opportunity in this particular property. Um, I would also tell you as an operator of apartments, um, there is, um, a pretty strong demand for apartments across, you know, across the region, not only, uh, in the metro Detroit area, and in particular, this type and size of unit.
Um, thank you. And I just wonder if there's, um, such a high demand because, you know, many people are looking for affordable condos on a smaller scale and they can't afford it. You know, people just starting out, I think, don't want a three or four-bedroom condo if it's their first investment. Um, I'm definitely in favor of doing something different to this particular corner and site. Um, but I'm not sure if you had mentioned that this is gonna be, um, upper mid-scale apartments. Nine hundred dollars to eleven hundred dollars really is not my definition of that. Um, if you were to upgrade the insides a little bit more with granite countertops, hardwood floors, I mean, I, I just think the pricing is very, very low, so therefore, um, you know, I'd like to see a, I guess, a higher price point. We've got some condos next door.
Sure.
Um, and actually, I, actually, I personally would love to see condos on the site, but, um, but thank you.
If I can adjust.
Yes.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'll address a couple of points to that. So I, I want to make sure that we convey that the interior unit, um, will be of that sort of, of, of that higher-end finish here. You know, it is not something that's going to be, um, middle market, you know. What we like to present as far as rents are concerned is something that we think is, is viable and is affordable by median income or, you know, the upper end of the median income spectrum. The market will really dictate what the, um, you know, what the, what the rents will be for this, uh, a, at the end of the day.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell? Okay, Councilman Cruz?
Yes, uh, Madam President, uh, I'm very much in favor of this, um, taking place. And I'm very much in favor of the price point as well, um, because we do need to have, um, affordable housing in our city so that all are welcome and can be, uh, part of our community. So, um, I, I have no real, I have no questions. I just want to say that I'm totally in support of what's happening. I've known, I've gotten, uh, a number of people that have called me about things going on in that area. It, uh, have not been good, and I'm glad to see we're gonna get something more, uh, sustainable, uh, for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Welcome back. Okay, Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, the, this mute button is really playing. Um, I'm, I'm for this particular project, uh, and I, it's good for that location and that, that location is a, uh, it's, it's not appealing to the, to the eye. Uh, but just from, what, what's the total value of your investment to bring this pri- property up to your, uh, your standard or your proposal?
Yeah, it's in excess of fifteen million.
Okay. All right. Have you, have you done a mon- market study?
Um, it, we've done them, not in the form of, um, we have our internal leasing teams do them. And we use third-party leasing consultants that do market studies for us as yel- as well. So yes, we have done both of those.
Okay. All right. What, uh, and this is all hypothetical, I know, uh, once you are, again, again, your, uh, investment to, to his point where you want to go out of pub, what type of, um, uh, mark, marketing of your property will you put steam down? I know that this, this is early, but it's, you, you have a so-called advertising strategy?
Sure, of course. You know, so, um, the biggest thing that we do is, is we will rebrand the property. And in this particular, um, for this, uh, asset, you know, we're working on a number of these projects right now. We've created a brand called the El Cove and will invest, um, heavily in, um, site signage, um, you know, logo, site signage, graphics, you know, throughout the property and make sure that it has a, a very high quality and professional look and feel, uh, and presence. Uh, and then, um, it doesn't necessarily go under the marketing budget, but curb appeal is a big piece of our marketing. And so when we improve landscaping and fencing and, and take down the athletic court, you know, sport court, whatever you want to call it that's currently there, uh, and improve the onsite amenities that are visible to drive-by people, that is a big piece of our marketing plan. And, and third, outreach today is done almost entirely through the internet. So whether it's Zillow or Apartments.com or prominently featured on our own, our website, you know, that, that's how we'll get the word out.
Okay, uh, just finally, I'm, um, this just popped in my mind. Um, are you looking at age, certain age demographic, or is this just the demographics that, uh, that's actually renting, uh, today? Is it just a generic renter today?
Yeah, it's, you know, we don't, uh, honestly, we don't really s- see this as age-targeted, um, at all. It's really more lifestyle-targeted, you know, and in this particular instance, um, we think there's a number of lifestyles that, that may, um, that may be attracted to this product, probably, um, most of them being non-family. So singles, and that could be young person out of college, that could be older person looking to move out of a two-story home, you know, and, and stay in the area, uh, and sort of a, a, a lot of the age, um, spectrums in between, which are, um, divorced, not married, uh, you know, never married, um, young couple, um, there, there's a lot of different variations.
Okay, and I, I like this project. I think it, it'd be a plus for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I too would like to see this project, uh, go forward. I think it would be great improvement for that area. Uh, so thank you, uh, Terry, did you have any, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have any comments?
My question to her answer, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Terry, do you have anything else you want to, um, leave us with tonight?
Just that if, um, if they decide to move forward, you'll probably see this in three or four months as part of the overlay development district rezoning.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, our next.
Thank you.
Our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding the proposed alley vacation.
Yes, thank you. Could we go to the next slide, please? Uh, the petitioner is Armenian Apostolic Society, um, located at two-two-zero-zero-one Northwestern Highway, on the east side of Southfield Freeway, north of Winora Ave. This is, um, also adjacent to the Manugian School. And the request is to vacate the forty-foot-wide Cardiff Place right-of-way, adjacent to and north of lots five-five-seven, and a twenty-foot-wide public alley adjacent to in east of lots five-fourty-six and five-fifty-five, which is basically on the, uh, western, um, edge of the property. Next slide. Uh, here's a close-up and the yellow, um, indicates, uh, where the vacation would take place. Next slide. And here's a close-up view. It's currently being used as a private drive that's been closed off with some barricades. Next slide. Uh, this is what it looks like from Winora, uh, looking, looking north. Next slide. And, uh, these are the actual, um, parcels for the alley vacation. The, um, original request came through the engineers department. They've been coordinating with us so that we're following our public hearing process for the vacation. Uh, typically these, uh, once they're vacated, the property gets split fifty-fifty, uh, with property owners on either side. And in this particular case, the church owns all the property. Next slide. And then, um, a recommendation would be, once it's, um, been vacated, to do a lot combination and combine all parcels under one single parcel number and ownership. Next slide. I know we have, uh, representatives, um, I believe Paul and, um, or possibly Mark, if you want to say a few comments, and we'd be happy to open it up for questions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Terry. Um, Madam President and, and council members, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Mark Perry and I'm president of Perry and Company in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Uh, on behalf of my client, uh, and owner of the property, the Armenian Apostolic Society, I want to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to consider my client's requi- I wanna uh, thank you for the opportunity to consider my client's request. Uh, of formally vacating uh, the remnants of the former Car- uh, Cardiff Place and, and adjacent al- alleyway. Uh, the history of the church and school uh, campus uh, dates back to the, the nineteen fifties. When uh, the planted lands making up the campus were vacated. And uh, the dozens of parcels uh, combined into what we believed was a single parcel. Uh, when uh, searching the property assessment records and the GIS uh, mapping system. My client discovered uh, the second parcel, uh, separated from the main campus parcel. Uh, by the unvacated alley uh, in Cardiff Place. Uh, it's my client's desire. To have the remaining portions of Cardiff Place and the adjacent alley vacated. So that it can uh, improve the appearance of the southwest gate. Uh, of the campus in the immediate residential neighborhood. I wanna thank you for uh, the opportunity to uh, present our request and I'm happy to take any questions. And uh, I do want to um, uh, introduce Paul and Donia. Uh, he is the church administrator and he's on the line uh, and available for any questions you may have. But there's, there's, there's Paul.
Thank you. Paul, did you wanna a- ask any questions or add any comments?
No, I think Mark covered it. Just wanna thank the council for their opportunity to consider our request.
Thank you. Terry, before I open it up to council, did you wanna add anything else?
Uh, just, just to let council know this will be coming back in two weeks for a public hearing and, and a final recommendation or approval of the vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with you, uh, Councilman Hoskins.
Um, I have no, uh, no questions on this.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh, this, this just makes sense. I'm, I'm all for it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Banks?
I have no questions. Thank you.
You, Councilman Brightwell?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
No questions. Thank you.
And Councilman Frazier?
Yes, uh, does the vacation run the full length of whatever's left of the alley?
Terry, would you like me to take that?
Yeah, Mark, yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Yes, um, council member, um, the alleyway in a. Uh, most of the uh, Cardiff Place were all vacated back in the fifties. It just for some unknown reason, this small stretch of the uh, alley. And the forty-foot-wide um, um, span of Cardiff Place. It was an oversight possibly that uh, just didn't get vacated.
Okay, I don't have any problem. I just wanna make sure that. We complete, you know, cause it's unusable piece of property uh, beyond the, where you're asking for vacation. And I just wondered if that piece of property north of there was part of uh, something that had not been vacated. I was gonna say just do it all, but it's, if that completes it, I'm fine with it.
Uh, ye- yes, and if I may add to that, um, the. The roadway, the lane that wraps around the north side of the high school. And along the west side of the high school and middle school in uh. Elementary and, and pre-K, that is um, a circulating road used for two, two things. One is a fire lane, that's one, and two is drop-off and pickup. Of students um, in the morning and in the afternoon. So it's an important piece of property for the circulation uh, as well as the safety of the kids.
Yeah, you, you'll still have to put some kind of a barricade at the end of it so you don't get stray traffic running straight through. Maybe landscaping.
Yes, yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and I have no questions. I think this is great and we should move forward with it. Um, Terry, is it anything else before we uh, move on?
Nope, this, uh, you'll see this again in two weeks for a public hearing and, and final vacation.
Okay, thank you so much and thank you for your time and your presentation tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is the presentation and discussion regarding the zoning ordinance text amendments.
If you can go to the next slide, please. Um, as you know, we always try to be as current as possible uh, with keeping our, our ordinance up to date. And in this past year with COVID and actually the Northland Center um, development. There's some new terminology that's in the lexicon of, of planners and where trends are going. Uh, one includes a dark store. These are former stores that are ten thousand square feet or larger who um, who have um. Retail, online shopping has closed them, but they continue to operate. Um, boarded up for, um, for all practical purposes um, to the pedestrian and, and to the outside world. Uh, data processing and computer centers have evolved. Last mile delivery are these uh, Amazon local facilities that can be as large as five hundred thousand square feet. Logistics centers, uh, another term for that, and then virtual restaurants. Uh, where they continue to operate, but people do not come to pick up their food. But you may have Uber drivers or, or some of these other um, private entities that are picking up food and delivering. So part of our text amendment is to update our definitions section. Next line. We also, um, there, there's been some um, practice issues that, that we've used. That we wanna beef up in our zoning ordinance and we have two um, intimate developments. That, that need some amendments for them to move forward with. We have verbiage about parallel parking in our ordinance, but we still have um. Challenges with architects and engineers understanding that, so we wanna include an illustration to make sure that that's clear. Uh, we have been requiring architectural um, standards with regard to durable materials on the um. Bottom of buildings. This is the first eighteen inches up to the sill plate, which is usually three feet. These are the areas that get damaged the most from bumpers of cars or um, lawn, um, mowing equipment. And also um, have water damage. So we'd like to make that um, clear and a more of a permanent requirement in the ordinance. We have a proposed drive-through on Southfield Road um, in the B-three district. And for whatever reason, the B-three requires a five-hundred-foot setback for drive-throughs. This is not required in any of our other districts for drive-throughs throughout the city. I believe it's an antiquated standard when the first squawk boxes um, started to come out with drive-throughs. They were loud, it could be obnoxious um, to neighbors. With um, LED technology and, and menu boards and sound controls. Um, the, these are not really an issue anymore and we'd like to eliminate that five-hundred-foot setback. Um, to allow for some development to happen. We talked about dark stores and ghost restaurants. We do not want them showing up in our traditional neighborhood centers. But we do um, recognize there is a need for them and we think that by permitting them. In light industrial and industrial districts, that's the proper place for them. Uh, we wanna expand areas that data processing and computer centers can be permitted. We also would like to include those in light industrial and industrial. We, we typically have to come to council for general office and medical office. As a use not specifically permitted as a manufacturing industrial use, we'd like to make that principal permitted use outright. You have previously seen a pr- a presentation about an enterprise rent-a-car, a gardener and telegraph. Uh, we need to um, allow auto rental as a special land use in an industrial district on telegraph. And then again, logistics centers, we do know there's a need for them. Uh, we, we recommend that they be um, allowed in industrial district along Eight Mile. Next line. So this is the um, proposed enterprise location that you previously um. Had a presentation on and we'd like to add the auto rental as a special land use. So you'll still have uh, the ability to review, set hours of operation and look at any special features. If this is permitted as a special land use. Next line. And then this is the vacant parcel on Southfield Road in Windha- Haven. This is an out parcel from the former um, Mobile Home Park that has um, been fully redeveloped. Into condo and apartments. At one time, there was a, a bank that had been proposed for this site. Uh, there's a developer who'd like to um, build some additional retail to support neighborhood um, business services. And have a drive-through end cap. Uh, this is a, the provision where in this particular district, a five-hundred-foot setback is required. From the drive-through to the adjacent residential district, which would prohibit any drive-throughs from being developed. On this location. And this is, the, the site is set idle for, for over a decade. Next line. So again, in um, just in summary, um, many of these proposed text amendments are dealing with new trends. In retail development and specifically allowing some additional development opportunities. On underutilized and undeveloped parcels within the city. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point. This is scheduled to come back in two weeks. For public hearing and your final consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, I'll start with you, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Sorry about that. You know, this, this is a lot of information, but I definitely think that it um. Each one holds merit based on the changing. Way we do business. Um, I'm, I'm all forward having these, uh, I'm all for having these move forward. Um, and having public hearings and, you know, figuring out if they make sense. Um, to me they do, um, but I'd like to obviously get more public input, so I'm okay with these moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Coun- Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Crowe, do we presently have any dark store? Um. Um, any dark stores, last mile deliveries or ghost restaurants in Southfield?
Well, um, through the chair, a, a number of our um, retail operators. That are in that ten thousand square foot um, size and slightly larger. We have been approached uh, about creating these dark stores and virtual restaurants in those, in those facilities. The last mile delivery actually, um, the developer for the Northland Center was trying to get that as, as an added use. And again, dirt, due um, to some research that we've done. Um, Amazon has these five hundred thousand square foot last mile delivery centers or logistics centers. Uh, with, with heavy transportation. So we have, we have kept them out. But um, it's really been an interpretation issue. Um, I'd like to protect the city a little more by defining where, where, what these are. And um, having the council agree on where they should be located and not have them pop up. At uh, the, the former Tel- Twelve Center or other of our larger retail centers throughout the city.
Um, thank you, Mr. Crowe. Um, I'm in favor of moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, Chair. Yeah, I, I definitely appreciate this uh, bringing the uh, uh, into uh. Modern days with respect to this. Uh, on, on dock store, on, on dock stores. Um, I said to a presentation several years ago about the taxing of dock stores, dark stores. Uh, would that Noah Center given your ten thousand square feet? Would that um, ex-supermarket up at tw- eleven mile and uh, Loser, would that? Fall into the category of dark store?
Well, again, um, it really can be any former retail center. That um, is used more for shipping and warehousing of, of goods that isn't open to the public. So um, you, you can think about them as almost being boarded up former retail centers. Um, they're storing products in there and they're shipping them out to consumers in the area. But from the street or from the uh, public right-of-way, they look like they're closed up businesses. And, and that's in essence what a dark store is and, and the same thing with virtual restaurants. Whereas the kitchens might be operating and providing food kind of at, on a wholesale scale. But public um, cannot come and dine in or to take out. This is being shipped out through some of these private um, automobile and, and trucking. Facilities. And I don't think we, we're, we want those in our, our viable retail centers at this point. There is a need for them and we say, oh, industrial districts are appropriate for that. But do we want them in our neighborhood shopping centers and our, our business corridors?
Okay, and, and uh, no problem. Look, when, what I said through was a pure finance. Uh, assessment and taxes scenario, but I clearly, I think, I appreciate you uh, updating our, our ordinances and tax amendments. This is um, it, 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 it's a good thing. We're uh, bringing us into um. Current day activities and modernity. Okay, thanks, Terry. That's it for me. I appreciate you, you updating our, our processes here.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm very in favor of this uh, move forward. So I have no real questions or concerns at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I'm like uh, Councilman Mandelbaum. I uh, like to hear some more discussion on, not that I'm against any, any of it. But just for clarification, and um, uh, Mr. Crowe. Is telegraph, I thought telegraph was light industrial?
Actually, um, a majority of, of telegraph has um, heavy industrial. Um, towards Eight Mile, um, but the council has designated that as Technology Research Corridor. So we, we've reallocated more of the industrial, heavy industrial sites to Eight Mile only. But there are, there are some uh, um, full industrial zoning on, on lower telegraph.
Yeah, I know, down by Eight Mile was uh, more heavy industrial, but as it got further north. I thought it was light industrial, but uh, no, I, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, uh, no questions uh, for me on this. I think it's, it's good that we're making these, these updates.
Okay, great. All right, so um, Mayor, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. I just appreciate the planner, once again, reviewing um, the language to keep us up to date.
Yep, thank you so much. Uh, Terry, did you have any closing remarks or?
Um, no, we'll, we'll have this um, back in front of you in two weeks for the public hearing and hopefully um, approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to our next item. Which is a request for Easy Online Solutions Limited at two-one-six-seven-one Melrose Avenue.
Good evening.
Oh, hi.
Hi, this is Rochelle Freeman, Business and Academic Development Director. Good evening, Council President and Admirable Board. We received a request from Easy Online Solutions who is relocating their um, corporate headquarters. In their data center to two-one-six-seven-one Melrose Avenue. They're looking for assistance through the PA three-twenty-eight program. We're looking to set two public hearings for August twenty-third. One to establish an industrial development district, the other to sta- to. the other to establish, to approve their request for the personal property tax abatement. James Pollan, who's the Vice President of Easy Online Solutions, has a short presentation for you this evening. And so I'd like to turn it over to James to go over what Easy Online Solutions is and what they're looking to do.
Thank you, Rochelle. And thank you for having us here. Looking forward to the opportunity to work with Southfield and to show everyone what we've been working on here. My name's James Pollan. I am the Vice President of Easy Online Solutions. With me tonight is Corey Silverstein, who's our long-term Corporate Counsel, and Jack Palmer, who's the Project Manager here and working on the construction of the site. We operate multiple brands which provide data center and internet infrastructure services. These services include dedicated servers, managed hosting, cloud computing and cloud storage. And so what our customers typically do with, with these services is host websites, deliver multimedia content, perform backups of local computer systems, as well as host and deliver secure VPN services. If you'd be so kind, onto the next slide. So Easy Online Solutions has a long history of operations in the region. And we were founded right here in Southfield in 1999. Lack of infrastructure in, in our business, that infrastructure is access to long-haul fiber or access to providers with undersea cables to reach global markets. Lack of that infrastructure at the time caused us to relocate our data center operations to Miami, Florida. Now, internet connectivity in the region has exploded since then. And we're excited to finally have a plan in place to bring that, those data center operations back home here to Southfield. Next slide, please. So this slide discusses some of our products and our deliverables. But I specifically like to call attention to the middle column where we talk about cloud hosting. Cloud hosting is really the, the future. Cloud hosting and cloud storage really are the future of the industry that we operate in. And by having those products and bringing those products to market, it allows us to compete from Southfield against some of the largest providers in the world, such as Amazon, Microsoft and Google. Amazon AWS being probably the most common and largest competitor in that, that area. So one important distinction on what we're doing is we're not building cloud infrastructure for ourselves. We're building cloud infrastructure for other companies so that they can utilize it as building blocks to expand their, their reach and capabilities. And that makes us unique in the Midwest. Next slide, please. So these are some of the pictures from what we've started on. The facility that we're building is, is state-of-the-art. And not only is the space beautifully designed, but we've planned for some of the most advanced cooling and power delivery systems in data center environments. That, that works really well as a sales pitch. But the, the reality is, we did this because it serves to attract and retain top talent in the region. Sure, you know, everybody wants to come and work in a happy and, and beautiful environment. And we're working to build that right here. To that extent, I'd, I'd be excited to guide a tour for anybody that's interested in coming by to see our space. Still under construction, so a little rough around the edges. And additionally, we're in it for the long haul. So we've signed a 10-year lease with a 10-year option to renew. It's a long-term commitment. And we anticipate our presence here in Southfield as helping to attract other high-tech businesses who need our products. Next slide, please. So this speaks to some of the job creation and some of the aspirations that we have. You know, as we grow, we anticipate adding 40-plus high-tech jobs here in Southfield. We've created a company culture that I'm particularly proud of. It, it's a culture that promotes original thought. And we have an environment where employees feel comfortable sharing their ideas. Compensation's high. We tend to pay higher than, than market rate for these positions in an attempt to, to, you know, capture and retain top talent. We also include generous time, time off, fully paid premium health insurance for, for our employees, as well as a beautiful office space for them to, to come and, and work in. And so all of these offerings come together to really attract the best and brightest to our company. So next slide, please. We're, we're Michigan natives and we're excited to be bringing operations back into Southfield. And we're extremely proud of what we have planned. So this slide speaks to some of the improvements that, that we've already made and, and some of the plans. In particular, want to call attention to the, the 500 gigabit of new fiber that we've installed, as well as, as carrier commitments with the, the tier-one global broadband providers. So what this does is, is not only does, we were able to leverage our existing purchasing power for internet connectivity in Miami to establish a lower price per megabit or gigabit in this case here in Southfield. And what that does is that, that allows us to then go and, and turn around and, and sell, resell that at a lower cost. But it also establishes a lower cost of bandwidth for the Southfield and Midwest market. Next slide, please. So this is a technical number referencing our power efficiency. And why this is important is, while this is a planned number, if we're able to hit this number, it will make us one of the greenest data centers globally. Now, to do that, it's considerably more expensive than a traditional converted office-based data center. So, but, a long-term payback is, is involved in, in making these decisions. And we're, we're buying into the future essentially. This also strongly highlights our long-term commitment to continue to be here and operate in Southfield. Next slide, please. All right, so why here? Besides our origin story and, and a desire to be close to home for everyone. Southfield has some of the best access to global internet carriers. And plenty of diversity and competition in the area for those providers allows us to pick and choose from the best. It also allows us to competitively negotiate our, our rates and, and try and keep rates as low as possible. Additionally, the, the cold winters that we all enjoy here afford us almost five full months of, of cost-free cooling, which helps to contribute to the, the previous slide with the efficiencies of the facility that we're building. And last but not least, access to qualified candidates. So Southfield and Metro Detroit have a strong history of technical and capable candidates. And we're excited to be able to tap into that pool for our operations now. Now, next slide. So, why should we be considered for a tax abatement? Internet and cloud hosting are, are a little bit different than manufacturing in that they require fixed resource availability. So in many cases, that relationship can be as small as one-to-one, where a single asset is only made available for a single customer. Unlike in, in a manufacturing business where you can use tooling to produce millions of pieces of a product, cloud hosting doesn't have a multiplicative relationship with the equipment that we use. So a personal property tax abatement will allow us to more effectively compete in the global stage. We're pitted against some of the largest corporations in the world and every competitive advantage is necessary for our business. Our goal is to bring business back to Michigan, away from Seattle, Washington, away from Ashburn, Virginia, and make cloud storage and hosting directly available here in Southfield. Every dollar that we spend on personal property tax is another dollar that isn't being used to grow and expand our Southfield infrastructure or to hire more Southfield employees. We need the ability to build and hire and this tax abatement would help us considerably. Thank you for your time and consideration today. I, I would love the opportunity to answer any questions you have. And I'd like to personally extend an invitation to anybody who'd like to come by and see the site. I, I'm working on, on polishing my tour guide skills. It's still a little rough right now, but I sincerely mean that. If you want to stop by, let us know. And lastly, we need your help to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Council President, I just want to add a couple of points.
Yes.
Thank you. In talking with our city assessor, we feel that a 10-year request is, is good. They signed a 10-year lease. They do have an option for an additional 10 years, but based on past projects, we can't extend past the signed lease. So 10 years, so we're requesting a 10-year abatement for them as well. They have relocated 16 employees from their Bingham Farms headquarters, as well as 25 full-time independent contractors. So there are already people working at the facility. And due to COVID, this request was delayed. So the, the equipment that they're looking to purchase, they have not installed or it's in the installation process. So they are able to, to apply for this assistance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shelley. I'll turn it over to council for any questions that they may have. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Shelley, approximately, what is the dollar amount for the personal property tax exemption?
Over the, the 10 years, it looks like they're looking to make about a $20 to $22 million investment or over the life of their project. It should remind everybody that the state has determined our base level of the amount of personal property that the city will receive based on 2013. So any new personal property that comes into the city is kind of capped out at that level from 2013. So we won't have any negative effect by offering this assistance.
And the, I'm sorry, the dollar assistance will be how much approximately?
James, I believe you're looking to make about a $22 million investment over the life of your project?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I've, I've been 100% supportive of businesses in the city of Southfield. And you mentioned that you will have a lot of high-paying jobs. So what is the, when you say high-paying, what's the typical dollar bag, dollar figure you're talking about?
Sure, most of these positions are six-figure positions. So these are senior developers, DevOps, guys that are, are both developing product solutions for customers, but, but troubleshooting difficult technical issues.
Okay, all right. Very good. I think I did learn something today. You indicated that by being here during the wintertime, you will save money. So that's, that's the first time I got that, that another benefit of being in a cold, cold Michigan. All right, well, thank you, sir. I'm, I support this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Cruz? Okay, Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I have some questions. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The employees that you have, you say you're bringing them from another area to Southfield. Do they have to be in Southfield to do the work?
Our, our most senior staff do. I think we, we benefit from having that close collaboration. We do have employees that are, are remote and some, as a product of the environment, we've, we've relaxed our remote work policy. So it used to be a requirement that everyone was in the office. We've since relaxed that, but our anticipate, we anticipate a full return to office in, in the near future.
Okay, so your most senior people have to be onsite, but the other technical people don't at this time?
Correct.
And when you quoted the salaries, were you quoting the most senior people? Or were you quoting the six figures for your average employee that's working for you?
I, I'm quoting the, the most typical employees. So we do, we do have positions that would be sub-six, six figures, but those would be high, you know, 60, 70, $80,000 positions for data center staff and more operations people, less, less development and, and system side. So, but our, our, or, or our, our most common employee would be in that, that low six-figure number.
Councilman Frazier, this is, this is Attorney Corey Silverstein. Forgive me, I, I haven't had the chance to speak. But, but your, your question, actually, I want to just amplify and expand a little bit on Mr. Pollan's answer. Simply because in the world of, of data centers, one thing that this tremendous amount of infrastructure investment is going to result in is it is going to result in more hardware. And when we install more hardware, which ultimately is more servers, more switches, more equipment, that is absolutely going to require people that are going to be there onsite. In the data center world, parts in these servers and in these switches, they break. It's, it's, it's a, it's a normal course of event. Hard drives fail, RAM fails, servers need upgrading. It is going to require people. And because this Easy Online Solutions offers 365-day support, it is a virtual certainty that, assuming we're able to receive this abatement, that it will be an additional, there will be additional hiring of employees during the course of our expansion and our growth into this project.
Okay, I, I'm not unfamiliar with what you just said. I worked for 39 years for the telephone company in a central office, working on this kind of equipment. But the thing that does surprise me is that you're not conditioning your air in the wintertime rather than bringing in cold air because you don't control the, the temperature of it and you're not filtering the air. I'm surprised that.
This is, I, I apologize for interrupting. This is actually a really unique deployment. I, I got excited. We're using a, a different type of cooling technology where we're, it's a closed loop with direct chilled doors. So we're actually, there's radiators that are strapped to the back of every one of our, our server cabinets that cools the air immediately as it's coming out of the server. So, and brings it down to an ambient, you know, 70, 72 degrees before it injects it back into the room. So there is no outside air exchange. We, one of the slides, I think, showed one of our chillers. We're using Motive Air free cooling chillers that perform that heat exchange outside the building.
Okay, yeah, because we had to condition our air to maintain the proper cooling of the equipment.
Sure, yeah. And, and we had, we had, you know, we had looked at some of those other proposals or some of those other strategies for operating a, a facility and ended up honing in on the chilled door technology because of the efficiencies. Because it's, it's really, they're realistically the only way to hit that really low PUE number that we're striving for.
Well, I'm, I'm not surprised because the, that technology has made giant strides because the equipment and, and testing equipment that I used to work with, you probably found in a museum now. Are you going, excuse, excuse me, are you going to encourage your people to live in Southfield?
I hadn't considered that, but, you know, proximity to the, the site is one of the requirements for our, our operation staff because there's an on-call component. I think it would certainly be. Um so I think it would certainly um be in their interest to be in or near Southfield.
Yeah, uh the reason I say that is there are about seventy-five thousand people or so that live in Southfield. There are probably a hundred seventy-five thousand people that work in Southfield during the day, that are in Southfield during the day. A hundred thousand of them come in and beat up our roads and go back to someplace else and spend their money and, and all of it. I would like to encourage people to, that are opening up businesses to encourage their employees to live in Southfield. We have fine housing, we have, it's reasonable price and uh just this evening, we're finding out that we're going to get some more. So uh.
Yeah, I, I, I agree.
Yeah, um and, and interesting thing, um now it sounds like I'm arguing against myself. My grandson and his roommate, uh she just received her doctorate. And he works in Ann Arbor. They both live in Ann Arbor. She graduated from U of M. They decided that because, and he works in a computer-related industry and both of them can work at a remote location, they're moving out of Michigan to North Carolina. Because the jobs they have, they can work from home and they're going to be, you know, five hundred miles away from home, from here anyhow. So I'd like to make sure that people that come to Southfield, at least in, try to encourage their employees to work here. We need, we need people to spend money in Southfield too, so. That's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Cruz?
I am totally uh in support of what Mr. Frazier just said. Um I mean, he really took the words right out of my mouth. Uh we need community benefits in this city and uh we're not targeting, you know, this organization uh per se. We want all of our uh companies and businesses and small businesses to um bring something back to this community that they're serving. So uh that was really the only thing that I had to ask, so. Um but I think it's been answered and I think the point has been made clear uh at this, at this time, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh Councilman Hoskin?
Thank you. Uh my only que- first, I'm uh, I'm in support uh of this. Um but my only question was dealing with uh have remote workers um versus in-person in the time of COVID and you, you actually uh answered that question for me. So that was, that was my only question and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you. Um yeah, I'm also, I'm in complete support of this project. I think it's a, it's a great project. And Shelley, am I correct that, isn't there another data center like right around that area on the same street? I can't remember the name.
Nexus dot net?
Yes.
Yes, a, a lot of these have different components to their data centers and easy online solutions. Is stating that they offer a different type of component that Nexus and some of our other data centers offer in the community.
Okay, so the, the, the Bingham Farms office is closing and everyone's going to move to, to the Southfield location?
That's correct.
Okay, so will the building still pay the real property taxes?
Yes, it will.
Okay, and then will, will this investment increase the value of the building and increase the real property taxes collected?
That is a question for our city assessor.
I'm, I'm on the line, Shelley, if you want me to answer that.
Yes, please.
Okay, I, I would say it would not include, uh increase the real property value because these would be strictly personal property improvements. But I'd like to take a tour through the building and see it once it's complete.
Alright, so there is a possibility that it may increase the actual value of the building, but not the real property?
Depending on what they do, if they make leasehold improvements or if it's all just related to the equipment, it could.
Okay.
Most likely it wouldn't.
But yeah, I, that's fine. I'm, I'm still, I'm still completely in favor of this project, so let's move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um Shelley, I think we're ready to move this forward.
Thank you. We'd like to put this on consent for August sixteenth uh for approval of the public hearings. And I'm to bring you back on August twenty-third for the two public hearings.
Okay, uh Mayor, did you have any comments? I didn't mean to overlook you.
No, I'm just glad uh for getting this company to come to Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, our next item is the Economic Development Initiative, uh Arbor Town application.
Yes, thank you. This is also um my item with Justin. Um the Arbor Town Two, uh which is a continued development at um that surrounds Arbor Lofts, is um looking to make um a sixty-unit development, uh investing thirteen million dollars to develop sixty units. And I have a N C O and GALL Carp online that will do a short presentation for you. We are looking to have two public hearings, one to establish industrial development district, that the commercial rehabilitation district and one for the commercial exemption request on the August twenty-third council meeting. So um Ed and GALL, are you on?
Yes, I'm here, Shelley.
Ed's here too.
Great, thank you.
Ed, if you want to go ahead and just uh, I, I know we presented several times already. So we can um get right to the details of the uh, this uh item.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. We go to the next slide. Uh so the Arbor Town Two LLC proposed development is uh increasing the uh multifamily residential component at the W three hundred Civic Center Drive location. Uh if you recall, the uh office building that was located right with the cursor is currently, was renovated into apartments uh approximately, hmm, let's say eight years ago or so. Um we want to continue this development uh with some of the new development, the sixty uh units that we've described uh before. Next slide. So uh some of the excess parking here, um due to the conversion uh to residential from the former office space uh is now excessive for what we had before. Um it's, you know, I, in total, I think it's approximately about two acres of excess parking. Uh the goal here is to take that excess parking, excess parking and uh turn it into residential units. Our request uh is for a district, excuse me, a P A two-ten district uh with a commensurate six-year certificate to follow. Next slide. Uh here's just a few other views. Uh one is it's currently uh sits and two uh and three would be the um uh units uh and, and homes uh with the garages underneath uh and some of the carports as well. Next slide. Um next slide, please. Again, another sort of uh visual from above. Um it will bring increased, uh I guess it was right before. Uh the, this will bring increased density to the area. Um I think the uh support the retail and commercial uh side of things uh on the other locations nearby. Um we're proposing site improvements uh to improve the walkability, increase, in, increase green space, um better landscaping, walkable area. Uh and a corner lot that's going to be reserved for park or community space. Um GALL, is there anything that I, I missed?
Um no, that pretty much covers uh the, the new development. Um you know, we, we started talking to Shelley about this because we are doing, going through the underwriting of the various loans that uh construction loans we're working on. Um and that's how this uh subject came up, you know, what the rents will be. Uh the cost to build the building and of course, you know, the overall expenses. Um so um overall, um you know, the rents that we're getting um in the current building are for a one-bedroom between twelve and fourteen hundred dollars uh per month. Um that does not include utilities, so the, so we know that there's a pretty strong market for this um type of product. Um two bedrooms have actually popped up recently as a, you know, relatively high-end demand as well. Um but that's about it. Uh the, the, we're, we're, we have our plans completed. We are working on the final engineering for the undergrounds, uh getting those pricing hopefully in the next thirty days. And uh finalizing the loan. So this is one of the other items that uh underwriting, you know, has come up with.
Thank you, Ed and GALL. Council President, I just want to add a couple of components. One, the city will continue to collect the real property of approximately one hundred and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars um on the current land value, on the land of the current um structure that's at the site. And as you'll remember, the city has been doing, the P A two-ten program enables the city to grant a ten-year um abatement to freeze the value for ten years. City Council has been uh opting to only offer five years. Um however, um Arbor Town Two is asking for an additional year, again, based on the cost of construction and um just the, the increased costs that are associated with this project. So um again, in the past several projects, we've only offered five years. But I think due to inflation and the different costs, they are requesting six years. Thank you.
Okay, uh Council, I'll start with you, uh Mr. Brightwell.
Um I have no questions. I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
Uh yes, I'm in favor as well. I have no problem with the six years, so uh we can move forward as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you. Uh Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, uh what is your total investment in this project?
Uh we have. Yeah, it's gonna be no less than thirteen million, more, more likely, it's gonna be fourteen million dollars.
Is that uh um pretty good number or is that just? Is that one you've looked at or? I don't want to.
Yes, this one we looked at very carefully. This one we looked at very carefully. Um the thing that's uh.
Okay.
Right now are the lumber prices.
Yeah, fortunately lumber has come back down uh to somewhat a reasonable number, so that's how we got to this uh. Otherwise, it would have been considerably more.
And so it's somewhere between thirteen, fourteen million dollars. Uh how many new units did you say you're putting in?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Hoskins?
Um I think the only real question is, um actually, I have no questions. I have no questions on this. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilman Mandelbaum?
Uh I, I have no questions. I think it's a good idea. My only, my only real question though is, you know, there's, there's a lot of projects that keep coming back with Arbor Lofts. Um different phases, different ideas. Um what is the possibility that this one will actually go forward within a reasonable time?
Well, Ed and I are both, as I said, we have shovels in our car ready to go. Um a lot of the delays, uh you know, uh not, not even counting COVID because it went back be, before that, was really um, you know, the demand. And very honestly, until about two and a half years ago, prior to COVID, the demands. What was that?
But nothing.
Yeah, so un- until about two and a half years ago, the project really fluctuated uh in their percentage of rentals between eighty and eighty-five. But over the past two and a half years, and that's really been the big difference, we're well over ninety, ninety percent. So, you know, until then, we could, we presented it many times, we went to lenders, we did construction costs. But at the end of the day, a lot of people, a lot of lenders and so on said, nah, we're not sure. Um also, a big effect has been, you know, the land across the street. Um it's been sitting there vacant for now, I don't know, well over ten years. I know there's been several different presentations. But a lot had to do with our investors and lenders saying what's going to happen there. Um but anyway, the, the good, the good news is that the demand is really there and that's what really gets the banks excited. Um several of the banks actually are out of state and they're, they're very excited about it.
You didn't want to use a local bank?
It depends on, construction loans are different, but yes, we went through local uh brokers and local banks as well. And interesting enough, it's the out-of-state banks for construction purposes who have been very aggressive.
Alright, so, so you're pretty sure that within a few months, we'll see some movement in this area?
Uh we, we, we believe so.
Okay, thank you.
We'd like to get some footings in and underground prior to the bad weather. So hopefully in the next four or five months, we'll start uh cutting up the, you know, parking lots and getting in there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Banks?
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, well, alright, then we can move this forward.
Thank you, Council President. We're looking at the same schedule to have the, the public hearings. On, on consent and our next meeting with the two public hearings on the twenty-third. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh next, we have the uh memorandum of law regarding the Southfield Chapter Seven.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, Mayor, Council. This is an informational piece. Um just something um that I presented to Council after the last meeting. We hear a lot about different sections in our charter, so um just like to clarify and keep it really short here because right now, what you see in our charter, it talks about the Home Rule City in the court that you always see as amended. So as you know, the laws are always changing. And so to address this and to shorten it, basically what happened in nineteen sixty-three when our constitution was changed, they also um revamped the judicial system. In nineteen sixty-eight, there was the uh District Court Act. When that uh was enacted, the uh local government bodies were given a choice to uh keep the municipal courts or to now have, we currently have the district courts. And as you will see in my memorandum, we um did have a resolution where we decided to have the court that we have now the forty-sixth district court. Now in Gross Point Park, Gross Point Woods, Gross Point Shores, they kept their municipal courts. Municipal courts have one judge. Um they don't have small claims where, you know, somebody, you know, citizen A wants to sue citizen B and you don't have to have a lawyer. They don't have that. They uh do have civil cases uh up to three thousand dollars. So uh it's a much smaller court, um smaller coverage of things um that they handle. But again, just to reiterate um from the nineteen sixty-three constitution, in the state of Michigan, we have one court of justice, the Supreme Court. And then under the Supreme Court, you have uh the Court of Appeals, but you have one major trial court, which are the circuit courts. And under the circuit courts, you have a course of limited jurisdictions such as the forty-sixth district court, the forty-eighth district court. So this was more of an educational piece just to address um each time that section was brought up that there's nothing wrong with our charter, um. there's nothing wrong with our charter, um, it was just in nineteen sixty-eight, the city decided to go with, um, choosing the district court and not keeping the municipal court. And in the state of Michigan, the only municipal courts are those four courts, uh, the Gross Points, the Gross Point Park, Gross Point Woods, Gross Point Shores. Uh, so with that, I have nothing more to add unless you have questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council, do you have any questions for our city attorney on this matter? And I will start with you, Councilman Cruz.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frazier. Oh, we'll come back. Councilman Hoskins? Oh, okay, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
And no questions for me, thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
I, I don't have any questions on this, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Questions, thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you for this information, uh, uh, City Attorney Dawn, uh, King, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, um, another item that's not on our agenda, but I think we should talk about at this time is the, um, meetings, and our first meeting in September, after Labor Day, would be a face-to-face, uh, meeting. But since we have the Delta variant going around, and we're unsure as to what new strands of the COVID virus, uh, is out there or will be out there. I would like for us to discuss extending, and we can talk with the mayor since he's on here, to extend our, uh, state of emergency and move our, uh, WebEx meetings, uh, at least for thirty days. I, some might even want to go to the end of the year, but, um, I would like for us to think about that. I sent some information out to you, and I believe our city attorney also sent some information out to you. Uh, Council, can I get your, uh, thoughts on this, uh, having our meetings continue to be WebEx meetings? And what steps we would need to take to continue that, and for how long? Um, and, um, I'll start with you, uh, Mr. Frazier.
Uh, I think I would prefer to have the WebEx meetings at least for another month to find out what this Delta is doing, because every time I hear the news, it seems like it's uh, gaining more foothold and, uh, bigger numbers every day.
Thank you. Um, Jason, Council, Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you, and I, I, I too would be fine with another month. Uh, you know, two weeks ago, I would have, I would have been fine with going back in person. Um, with maybe some restrictions, I don't know, like, uh, mandating masks, everybody in the, uh, you know, in the chamber. Uh, but it seemed, things have, uh, seemed to change so fast, um, with the Delta variant. And so I'd be interested in seeing what, what things will like in a month, because like I said, two weeks ago, I was fine. Uh, so maybe a month after we're, uh, a month, a month after, um, uh, we, uh, we're, we're, um, our time is up, um, maybe things will change then too. So I'd be fine with doing, uh, at, at least one more month.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you. You know, uh, similar to Councilman Hoskins, I was also very much looking forward to coming back in person, and I think that there adds something to being in person. Uh, that being said, a lot of the, um, synagogues that I frequent, um, have even reinstated their masks po- mask policies because some of the infectious disease doctors have basically said it's, it's coming back, it's not, it's not as bad um, in, in our area, but they're, they're not taking any precautions and they want to make sure that everyone's safe. So, you know, hearing from, from them, they work in hospitals every day. I do think that it makes sense to at least extend it another month, just to see what happens within, uh, our, our city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Um, I agree with my colleagues, um, although if, if we do extend it for thirty days, I would like to have a clause in there that, um, we have an opportunity to also consider in case things do get worse. I also am, am not opposed to going a little bit longer, so we don't have to keep coming back, so whatever the majority of the council wants is fine with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I am definitely for, um, caring, uh, continuing the electronic meetings, and we are, we are authorized, uh, based on Ms. Dawn, uh, Ms., um, uh, City Attorney note, we can go out to December thirty-one. Uh, and I hate to base my life on current events, I like, I like some certainty. If we can push this out, we can always, uh, uh, pull things back, and I would hate to stop coming every thirty days trying to extend this. Um, in essence, uh, if my pleasure would be to extend it to the end of the year, uh, this, this thing is based, this pandemic, it's, it's too fluid to just be haphazardly saying we will, we'll look at this again. Uh, so, and that, that's a cruel way of saying that, uh, I prefer to just push it out to the, either year, to the extent that we can, uh, as according to the Oakland Means Act, extend it to December thirty-one. And, um, I hate to say that certain things are driven, but I have someone in my orbit where doctors mention to them that if you get this, you're gonna die. So, uh, I don't want to be, even think that perhaps I, I contributed to, uh, someone's death by going to a meeting. So if we can, I would prefer to, uh, we, what we can legally do is push it to December thirty-one. Uh, but obviously I'm a councilperson, I represent the city, and I'll do what needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Cruz?
Uh, Councilman Brightwell says exactly what I was thinking. And, um, I, I think we should go to the, uh, end of the year before we go back to in-person meetings. Uh, given, uh, new information that's coming up about as it relates to, uh, the COVID and the new strands and all that type of thing. So I think it's in our best interest, to be honest, is to, uh, just give us some time, so we can see where we are. So, um, my, that's, that would be my vote, if you will.
Okay.
To hold out until the end of the year.
Okay, uh, so Dawn, if we wanted to, or I know we have a general consensus to definitely continue with the WebEx. If we wanted to go through whatever, thirty days to the end of the year or what have you, what steps do we need to take? I believe the mayor first has to, uh, declare a state of emergency?
Well, he declared, I'm sorry, Madam President, if I may, he declared it in spring, and
Okay.
Um, at this point, um, the council would just do another resolution extending it to whatever date uh, that you all would like. That's what we do in April, so we would just prepare another resolution, changing the language to show the dates, uh, so that we would have a resolution, you know, including all the information that you all just, uh, stated.
Okay, and if we go to the end of the year, we can always end it earlier, am I correct?
If you choose to end it earlier, um, come back in, another resolution, um, revoking that resolution, s- and stating the resolution, the reasons for, uh, not going out to the uh, last date of the extension.
Okay, so then, uh, Council, if I'm hearing you correctly, what we need then is to put a, uh, motion on the floor for the extension of the, um, meetings to be continued as WebEx meetings to a date certain, and we can say either thirty days or from, from, you know, we could go to October one, or we can go to December thirty-first. So I need someone to make a motion for us to do that?
Uh, President, I'd like to mo- make that motion, uh, for a date uncertain, uh, until we have more information, so, uh, if that's acceptable to the body, uh, I will move that motion.
We need a rule ten anyway.
Oh, that's true, because it would be, it would be, uh, this is a committee of the whole meeting.
Uh, Madam President, this is the, the clerk, would it be too much of an inconvenience if we can make sure we just have a written resolution and have it on the agenda for next week, so we will, won't leave any room for error in the motion that may be on the table, a verbal motion?
Okay.
Fair with me.
And I'll prepare the motion, I'm looking at the one we did before, um. I was going to recommend that we do put a date in.
I'm going to go, I'll go with that.
As far as, as far as I'm concerned, it's just as easy to write twelve thirty-one as it is the October first.
Yes.
I can, I, I, I'll, I'll go with December thirty-first.
Okay.
I'll go with December thirty-one.
Okay, and, and Mayor, can, do you have any comments?
No, whatever is the wish of the council, um, uh, I am fine with, as, um, I didn't know if I had, but Dawn explained it, I don't have to write, uh, issue another, um, state of emergency. The one I declared last spring would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, so the, the consensus or general consensus of the council is to go to a date certain of December thirty-first? Dawn, so you'll prepare a resolution for us, and, uh, it'll be on our, uh, consent agenda next week?
Yes, I'll prepare then, have it ready.
Okay. All right, well, next we, it, it, are there any other comments or anything, anything that anyone wants to add before we go into communications?
Yes, I have something I'd like to bring up, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is regarding the recommendation from the Compensation Commission. First of all, first off, um, let me start off by stating that I appreciate the work of the Compensation Commission. However, I was disappointed when I was asked if I wanted to address the commission and was only allowed three minutes to introduce myself to the new members and to discuss increases for elected officials. In the forty-five years that I have been with the city, the elected officials were always given as much time as they needed to address their thoughts to the commission. I am disappointed that we were never notified of this three-minute ruling prior to appearing for the commission. If I had known, I definitely would have been better prepared. With reference to the letter of recommendation that was submitted to the city clerk and forwarded to all elected officials regarding the findings of the Compensation Commission, I'm a little embarrassed and ashamed as to how this letter was drafted to this honorable body. I'm not sure who put the letter together, however, it has always been the practice of this city that letters and manuals be presented to the elected body in the utmost professional way. Excuse me. There is a certain format that has been used for years when submitting the local officers' Compensation Commission recommendations to the elected body. Someone just had to check with the city clerk, who has all the letters and findings of this commission to find out what that format was. Regarding the findings of the Compensation Commission, I personally do not believe that any elected official should receive a higher percentage increase than the city administrator and management. This honorable body approved a pay increase for city staff, department heads, management, city administrator, and the city attorney. Those increases were two percent for the first year and three percent for the second year. This was based on a study performed by our H R department and finance department as to what we could afford to pay all employees. I feel that the office of the city clerk and the office of the city treasurer deserve the same two percent increase and three percent increase. I cannot support the recommended five percent increase for both offices for the two thousand and twenty-one year and an additional five percent increase for the two thousand and twenty-two year. We are presently in arbitration with our fire department, who work extremely hard every single day to protect the people of this great city. They have not had an approved contract in several years. How can we justify at this time a five percent increase for both of these offices? When we are in arbitration and everyone else receives a two and three percent increase? Also, I do not feel that council should receive a pay increase. The Southfield City Council is compensated very well compared to all other communities in Oakland County. In fact, I think we are at the top of the scale when it comes to our salary and feel that we should decline the proposed recommendation. With reference to the council president and pro tem, I do believe they do deserve an increase. They both attend a lot more meetings every week and do represent this entire body. However, I do feel that the council president pro tem should receive a few hundred dollars less than the council president. Last, I am not sure why the proposed increases were retrobacked to the beginning of the calendar year. If you look through all the records, the Compensation Commission has always made recommendations based on the fiscal year, not the calendar year. So if we approve the recommendation of the Compensation Commission, the elected officials will be receiving an extra six months bonus. I ask each and every one of you, do you think this is right? We are elected by the people, and we personally all choose to run to serve the people of Southfield. Not for a price, not for a salary, but to be servants to the community. Um, I read the email, why this item was not placed on the agenda for discussion this evening. And I am not sure if I agree. Um, I felt that this should have been a line item. However, um, I would like to hear the feelings of my colleagues on what I just discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Banks. I'll leave it up to Council. Does anybody want to, or have a response to, uh, Councilwoman Banks?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think Ms. Banks has some very solid, um, ideas with respect to, um, spending, uh, the taxpayers' money. Uh, and, um, it, I, I, I do have fiduciary tendencies, because that's what I've done all my life, really. Pretty much from professional life, dealt with other people's money. And, uh, so, uh, she makes a very good point, and I, I would like to see those, uh, obviously discussed and or, um, kind of up or down, we, either one of her points individually, I think we could, uh, in good conscience, I couldn't get conscious, just give a, a blanket on everything she said. But I think individually, I could, uh, uh, make a decision relative to, um, how we are spending the, the taxpayers' money is rep- is rec- is recommended by the, uh, Compensation Committee. So she did some, make some very good points there. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Brightwell. Is there any other comments?
Madam President, this is Councilman Cruz.
Yes, Councilman Cruz.
May.
Yes.
Uh, I agree with, with, uh, Councilman Brightwell and with Councilwoman Banks. Uh, and some of what she was saying and to what he also added to it. I will say this, um, I don't think that, uh, we are being bad stewards as it relates to the finances of the city. And, you know, as others have gotten, um, raises recently because we have gone through a financial. because we have gone through a financial, um, turno, term, turmoil. You know, uh, I mean, we, everybody's been kind of stuck at a certain level at a point. Um, what I also don't think is that people don't understand the extra work due that is not just meeting on Monday for a couple hours. Well, been what, what's ten o'clock? So we're even four hours today, uh, just today. Um, we also are a community that also has subcommittees, um, that meet as well. Um, we take emails throughout the day. We take phone calls throughout the day. And we have assistants in terms of, uh, secretary or administrative assistant or anything of that nature. Um, and many of us are still working, uh, full-time. So I don't really see a problem with us having, uh, raises in terms of our salary. Um, and, and keep in mind, the two percent, I think, came down to about three hundred dollars a year. So I don't think that's a, that's a real big hit for the cities. So, um, and the five percent for our city clerk and for the treasurer, I don't, I don't, are exorbitant in a way that is going to really hurt the city, uh, in any kind of way. And so, uh, yes, of course, I've always been in support of our, of our staff to get their contracts approved. And I was glad that we got them through. Uh, I know we're still working on a couple more, but nonetheless, um, I just want, wanted to say that, um, and you know, in retrospect, it's not gonna, it's not gonna make a difference one way or another as far as I'm concerned. But, uh, I, I just feel like, you know, people should be compensated for the work that they do. And, uh, we, we as a council, as a mayor and treasurer clerk are doing a lot of work here. We're working all the time. And I mean, I can, I don't have to explain to you because you already know. But, uh, that's, that's just what I wanted to say. And, uh, I, I, I'll be okay one way or another. But I didn't think that there was, uh, a big deal to make about today. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll just finish out the council, uh, Councilman Fraser. Did you have any comments?
Uh, I'm a short timer.
All right. Okay. Uh, Councilman Hoskins?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I think I, um, I mean, I'm in agreement with that, what everyone has said so far. Um, I mean, I think, um, as far as beyond council, I mean, beyond the clerk and the treasurer, everyone else is in line with the two percent one year, three percent the next year. Um, like Councilman Cruz brought up, two percent for us is, it's only three hundred dollars. Um, um, there, uh, you, there were some good points, um, about, um, as far as retroactive, when it should start, um, should have started at the beginning of the year versus the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, I mean, that's a, that's a good point that Councilwoman Banks brought up, brought up. Uh, but for the most part, I, I don't, I don't think that there are, um, I think we're still being good stewards of, of taxpayer dollars, uh, here in the city, um, for the, the clerk and the treasurer, um, that those positions over the years have actually lost almost ten percent, um, of their wage amount. So, um, I'm not, I don't think there are, I, I, I appreciate Councilwoman Banks bringing this up. Uh, I'm glad we're having this, this discussion about it. Uh, I don't, as far as the recommendations though, I don't have any, uh, major red flags about it.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Amanda Baum.
Thanks. And I, I hear what all of my colleagues have said. I understand the points that Ms., that Councilwoman Banks made and, and as well as, uh, all the, my other colleagues. Um, I, I don't know if it really makes a difference one way or another. You know, it is, it is a minimal amount. Um, you know, she does bring up a good point about the, the firefighters, um, in arbitration. I think that that's something that is being worked on through the city. Um, but it, I don't know if, you know, there's, there's a lot going on. I don't necessarily know if the, this minimal amount will, will make a, a huge difference in the city. I will say that I, I do agree with her in, in all the years that I've been with the city and have had an opportunity to speak to the local officers' compensation committee. Um, we've never had that three-minute rule. Um, we've been able to sit down and express our thoughts and, and things like that. I'm not sure why this year was any different. Um, but I would definitely like to see, uh, some changes in how the, how that meeting is run the next time they meet in two years because I think that, uh, the, this experience for me this time around was much different. Um, I would say probably was not even well organized. Um, you know, with us finding out last minute about the meeting and everything else. But I do think that, um, it's not, it's not a big, it's not a big deal one way or another. And, you know, as Councilman Cruz says, you know, we're, we're getting emails and we're, we're working around the clock while we still, while some of us still have our, uh, our regular jobs. So, um, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I, I hear and concur with all of you. And I just think that maybe we should get some kind of communication over to the compensation board that, uh, what the concerns are and hopefully they can address those. And when they have their next meeting, improve on what, um, might have been different this year. Uh, so, and that's, that's, that's it. I do, I do believe though, if I may, and, um, um, our administrator can correct me, but I think that the firemen are withdrew from the arbitration. So I don't believe they're still in arbitration, but, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct, Madam President. Uh, the, the fire department, the Fire Fighters Association withdrew that request. We're, uh, back in active negotiations with them. But not for arbitration.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I, then I, I do have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the fact that this is retro back to January one, could that have been an honest mistake on someone's typing where it should have been a fiscal year?
Uh, that I don't know. I would have to, that would be the compensation board. We could ask them.
I believe that the, um, HR director, uh, placed the retro in place to align it with the other city employees, uh, when they were getting their, uh, benefits. I believe that's what he, he did for that recommendation.
Uh, um, Madam Chair, if I may add just a comment.
Yes, please.
First of all, um, Ms. Banks is, is absolutely correct. There was, there was a time limit on, uh, public comment, um, but never a time limit on an elected official's comment. Matter of fact, uh, elected officials are invited either to submit, um, commentary in writing or to come before the Compensation Commission and share their, uh, feelings. Um, so that, uh, while I, uh, chose not to do either, um, I wasn't aware that there was a three limit, three-minute limit, uh, placed on, um, anyone who chose to speak, uh, as an elected official. Um, the, uh, the other point is, uh, in the past, and that, you know, things change. Um, but in the past, the, uh, whatever the Compensation Commission, uh, recommended went into effect on July first. Um, but I, I hear Ms. Hawkins', um, explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't have anyone from HR on the call tonight to, to, or if not, we'll just, I believe that, uh, Sharika, your ans, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, that your, your answer is correct. But I was just wondering, since it was their recommendation, if someone's on the line, they could confirm as well.
Um, Council President?
Yes.
This is, um, Maria Calhoun. I am here on the line. Um, I'd just like to make a couple of points if I could, please.
Yes, please.
The recommendation was made to align with the, uh, pay increases for the city, for city employment, employees, which went back to January of twenty twenty-one. Um, and per your request, the, uh, recommendation has been amended to reflect recommendations of years past. So that, uh, letter should be inserted to replace the original letter submitted as well. And with regard to the three-minute time limit, uh, because of the medium that we were using, the, um, chair of the local officer, uh, compensation committee had another engagement. So the, uh, timeframe was limited to three minutes for all speakers in an effort to be able to complete the, uh, recommendations in a timely manner in order for us to meet the, uh, timeframes that are allotted by law. So that is why the three-minute, uh, three-minute, uh, rule was instituted.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Um, Ms. Banks. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Banks, do you have any other questions or concerns or comments based on anything that you've already heard?
Um, it's just that it would have been nice to have been notified. So, but I think, um, Councilman Brightwell also has something to say. I, I think in the future, if there is a limit, um, council needs to be made aware of this. Um, and maybe the meeting should have been rescheduled. To my understanding, um, they could have scheduled the meeting another time. They didn't have to have it, the date that they did, but, but thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, this is perhaps, um, I do read a lot, but I, I wouldn't know where they went back to the, um, the beginning of the calendar year. Uh, historically, uh, money is dispensed during the, the budget year. Uh, and, and I, I know there's a certain thing against corporate finance and fiscal fin, I mean municipal finance. But I, I can't conceive of going back to another budget year, giving somebody a raise with prior budget year money. So I, it, it, it just doesn't make sense to, if the fiscal, if someone is getting, getting a raise, they, it's for that particular, uh, fiscal year. So I, um, I don't know, I, it's, it, it, yeah, and, you know, I'm, I'm just flabbergasted, I'm just, you know, there's a certain thing, it's just, just, I'm befuddled by the fact that we make up these little rules as we go along. Uh, and I've told someone before, there, there are certain, certain reasons why certain cities go bad. I mean, I, it's, and there's a study on why certain cities go bad. And they, people go back and do a forensic, uh, analysis of what, why did this city fail? And this always comes in the back of my mind and, and there's what, why, why are we making this little rule? We're gonna go back a year. It's, it, it, that's one of the things, but, uh, maybe I'm just, um, a little befuddled by that, the, the fact that I did not, I missed that, that they went back to January one to pay someone for, for this particular, uh, uh, fiscal year. But,
Um, Councilman, Councilman Brightwell, going, retros are, are common truly in, in, we've done, we've even, um, approved them here on council. Uh, it's not for, I can't say for the, uh, elected officials, th, that particular part. But I mean, retros in general, we have approved and gone back and based them a lot of times on calendar year and not on budget year. Ju, just a point of information.
Yeah, no, I, I remember one. I, I preempted, I didn't speak up at that time, but this one just caught up. God, I didn't even know this was a, an item. But I, I was, I'm not for going back out of another cal, another budget year to, to pay it out of, uh, to pay this budget year out of past, past year. Uh, so, but, and, and like I said, a lot of things Ms. Banks indicated were, uh, very good. And some of them, point by point, they, they, um, it, it, they really should be looked at individually and, and just to see what, what is, uh, physically good and what is a good use of the taxpayer money and what is a good reward for the individual who, who did the work. So that there had to be something associated with giving people money. You don't give it to them because they show up and they didn't die. I mean, it has to be a reason, uh, uh, people doing their work and they, they get rewarded for, 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 for working, uh, and, and doing their job. So, um, um, uh, maybe, maybe I'm just coming out of this, this pure financial bag that I, that I normally live in. So, but anyway, that, um, thank you, ma'am. I'm just, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President? Maria Calhoun?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind the, the council that the recommendations are based on the positions, not the individuals.
Thank you.
All right. And Madam President, can, can I comment, please?
Y-yes, Madam Clerk.
Um, I just want to comment on two things. As elected officials, I think it's important for us to respect the rules of other commissions in this city. Um, if we went to the planning commission and they had rules in place based on the Planning Act and the Roberts Rules of Order, we would govern ourselves accordingly with that. Also with the local officers' Compensation Commission, under their act, they have the authority to set rules. And we're not exempt from following those, uh, rules that they set forth. We don't get special privileges. Uh, and we shouldn't want special privileges. Um, there, there always are exceptions. However, just like we have residents come to our meetings and put time limits in place, these commissions have the full autonomy to do that. And we're not above those rules. So, uh, we should respect their wishes and placing those rules in place. Uh, we can ask for more time and it's the chair's, uh, wishes that they grant the more time, but it should not be an entitlement just because we are elected officials that we do get more time because we have our own rules that we want people to follow when they do come to our council meetings. And I do believe that it is essential for us not to think that we are above the rules and respect the time and the commitment of each person that has been involved in the process. And although it may not have been the way that most of us wanted it, we should still treat individuals on those commissions with, uh, dignity and respect and not foster a, uh, ability of, of bullying individuals that do serve the city, um, on their own will. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, um, everyone. Um, okay. So are there any other comments or, so are we going to move on to communications? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And, uh, we're, we're at our communications portion. And before we start, I'd just like to again briefly read into our, uh, our, our rules, our Rule Seven of Procedures of the Southfield City Council, that no speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official. That it is unrelated, that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusive language when addressing the city council. And, uh, any person who violates this section will be asked to stop and cease from that, uh, language. And if not, their microphone will be muted. And with that, I'd like to ask the, uh, city clerk if she would please, uh, open up the lines for comment.
Madam President, the lines are open.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, Four Eight Zero Three Seven. Madam President, since- Madam President, since 1969, there has been five new editions of the Southfield City Charter published with the outdated Chapter Seven contained within that describes a dinosaur court system that makes up 10% of the Charter's contents. And to top it off, this city charges $15 per outdated copy. Madam Chair, what is your justification for publishing repeatedly five outdated editions of the city charter at an outrageous price for this useless pamphlet? In a word, a relic. Madam Chair, this is all happening on your watch. Also, Madam Chair, on your charter's cover page, it states, and I quote, "This pamphlet is a reprint of the Charter of the City of Southfield, Michigan, published by order of the City Council." Unquote, "City Council," that's you folks, isn't that right, Madam Chair? There's no one else here to blame, is there, Madam Chair? After 52 years, it is about time that you folks here on this city council wake up and do your job and delete Chapter Seven from your outdated charter, along with the many other outdated items, by creating a Charter Commission under the authority of Section 18 of the Home Rule City Act of 1909. If not now, then when? If not you, then who? If the City of Detroit can mandate periodically a ballot initiative for a proposed Charter Commission in order to try to update their charter, then the Southfield City Council should be able to do the very same thing. If not you, then who? Who else? Pray tell, who else, Madam Chair? Who else but you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hello? Yes.
Okay. This is Pamela Gerald, and I wanted to speak to what I heard Councilwoman Nancy Banks say. She was absolutely correct in all of the things that she said and that she inquired about. I'm going to put my take on it. We have a lot of new members on the boards and commissions, primarily the Local Officers Compensation Commission. It was a hot mess this year. The meeting was not advertised properly. There was a lack of communication, very slow with the other notifications. And the part that really upset me was, out of the two positions, the clerk and the treasurer, you were only going to give the treasurer the same thing that you gave, that you gave all of the other city managers, and that was appropriate. What I did not like, and for whatever reason, it appeared as if the raise was about the person and not about the position. Why would you only agree to give the clerk, whomever by name she is, five and five, and only give the treasurer two and three, which were total five, like all of the other people? You know, these boards and commissions need to be trained on how to do things. There needs to be communication with other entities. But I was at the meeting via Zoom, and I was amazed that my perception of the Human Resources Director was, he wasn't engaged. He was looking down, he was doing things, he was the only one that wasn't really looking at the people. How dismissive. But the message that was given, the message that was given was, Southfield is an all-black city, and the first black clerk in Southfield should get five and five, and she's been there four years, but it's not the position. I mean, the person is the position, and here's a treasurer that's been here for a very long time, 2005. You only wanted to give him two and three. So you were forced to give both of them the same amount, because the charter says the parity has to be equal with those two positions, and it has been past practices. And Councilwoman Banks, you were correct. Elected officials should be given more time. You haven't restored the five minutes for the residents, which is what we used to get.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Uh, Madam President, it does not look like we have anybody else to put the comment.
Okay. Then I'll say our communications portion is now closed. Is there any other business tonight? We have no meetings, no, nothing? All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Councilwoman Amanda Ball. I just, I had two questions for administration, if they don't, if, if you don't mind. One is, I know that we have a spot concrete program, and there was a, a street link and drive between Southfield and Greenfield that kept being slated for complete reconstruction in our overall 10-year road plan. And I know that due to budgets, due to timing, other roads, other projects, that it kept getting pushed off. However, there are several areas of the road, I think maybe five or six actual concrete squares that are pretty much disintegrated. And I'm hoping that we can find some time, maybe before it gets too cold this season, to add those to our spot concrete program. I think that, you know, there's, it's gone to the point where everyone drives on the opposite side of the road just to ignore or, or not want to try to get a flat tire on certain parts. And I think that if we figured out a way to either take those squares out or mill them down with some type of, maybe asphalt, you know, put an actual asphalt layer, not just patch it. I know Public Works came out last week, I think, and patched a couple of the potholes, but it's so poor that we need to figure out something, because it's not going to last. And now it's not even on the city engineer's calendar for, you know, due to other projects taking priority. So I'm hoping that we can try to figure something out before, before winter for that area.
Maybe that's a creative speed bump.
This is, well, you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose a car. Uh, this, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a inverted speed bump.
Whatever works.
Yeah. Um, my next question is, and, and this came up with some discussions I was having with some residents as it relates to our water bills. And I know that we installed these, the Wi-Fi water meeting equipment throughout the city, and our DPW can pretty much find out, you know, if there's a high water usage, they can find out almost immediately when something is going on. And, and they, you know, leave a note on the person's door or whatever it is. Is there a way, because everyone is, everyone these days seems to be concerned about their water bills, is there a way that residents can have access to their specific meter reader, I guess, to find out how much water they're using, without actually going down to the basement and trying to figure out, you know, how things are spinning and, and read it, rather than, you know, they can go online to look at usage and everything else real time?
Madam President, if I may, this is Administrator Zorn.
Yes, please.
Uh, to, to the second question, just let me just clarify. We have not put in the final piece of that meter reading. The, we have the, the capabilities of sending out all of the right information, but as we're putting in new software, we haven't put into place where it ties the final piece together. You know, frankly, I thought we were a little bit further along, but due to COVID, some delays, as we were getting electrical capacity to each of the devices that would send out the signals. We've not yet completed that. And I know purchasing is working on the software selection of which vendor will be integrated with BSNA. What you're describing, I believe, is one of the capabilities we're trying to get to. Uh, and what I hear you describing is where not only will the city be able to read it, but if the homeowner turns on a, a certain device or, or enables it, they'll be able to see and read their information as well.
Yes. It's, it's similar to like the DTE Insight app.
Yep.
Um, and, and it just started from a neighborhood chat. We were talking, and I said, hey, well, you know, Southfield's working on this, uh, this feature, and then people were like, well, can we get access to, to our own home? And I was like, hey, that's not a bad idea. But you're saying it's, it's, we're still working through some of the, the software components.
The last piece, because now I, the devices to read, to send out the signal are, are there, now we need to get the integration with our software. And if you recall, we're changing our software over from the Eden to BSNA. So we're, we're moving in that direction about a month, six weeks ago. I, I was briefed on, on what, what, what's, where we're at, and we made the decision to, well, instead of doing it with Eden, we, that we would do it with BSNA.
Okay, do you know, do you know approximately what that timeframe is? Are we looking at, you know, three months, six months?
Uh, I think you're within six months, between three to six months. Uh, all right, John's in the office, he's giving me, uh, it would let, can we say spring of, of, John, why not? John just came to my office.
I would just add, there is a presentation scheduled for the Finance Committee this month.
This month.
And options that are being considered, one is going with the company that's, an add-in company, another is going with the company that actually does our monitoring, our metering work, and they are coming out with new products and have invited us to be a beta tester, and that may be a better way to go, but it will be discussed at the Finance Committee and once then taken account.
Okay, I, I look forward to that presentation. And then, um, Mr. Zorn, have you, what about my comment about Lincoln?
Spot concrete? Uh, thank you. I did the double lap around Lincoln today. Uh, I'm asked, I've inquired regarding balances where we're at for the spot concrete. Let me just say this to council, we probably need to increase the authorization with our current spot concrete. I also need to speak to staff, and the question with staff is, will our current contractor, will they have the ability or to get this in? We're already running, they're in town working, but we're already, we've already added a substantial amount of spot concrete work this year. Uh, so I'd like just a few more, probably another week for some additional due diligence. And the numbers we're talking about, I'm, I'm not too, you know, we could figure that out. Um, I also know that there are a few other spot concrete places we're looking to add to this year's list.
Okay. Uh, that would be great.
So I'll come back with council, with the verbal information, possibly at our hybrid meeting on the 23rd, we might be able to move something along.
All right, I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Amanda Ball?
No, I'm, I'm all set, with the exception of, I believe we did have somebody who was having trouble raising their hand.
Oh, yes, I was gonna have him be recognized soon as you were done.
Yep, I'm a guy.
Okay.
Thanks very much. My paralysis is over, I can raise my hand now. You, you guys certainly have a lot on your plate, and I appreciate it after listening to four hours of board meetings, and I appreciate you taking my comment. Uh, Howard Corman from Southfield. I live in the middle of the coyote zone on 12 and Bell Road, and a, a few comments. One is my dog that was attacked, my wife's dog, and my wife was with the dog within 10 feet, so the people don't scare away the coyotes anymore. Unfortunately, they hang out on our playground at our house, they hang out on the baseball diamond at the field at the school where we can have a nice view from our upstairs window. And I think the survey is even misleading in that 46% of people said they would like the coyotes exterminated or something more aggressive done, and 54% said no. I think it's kind of like COVID. Two weeks ago, the councilman was saying that he would have felt different about coming to an in-person meeting than he does now. I think two weeks ago, most of our, our neighborhood would have felt the same way until the coyotes really moved in and got to stage four. And now the opinions, I think if you did a survey around, it would be pretty close to 100% that people say now is the time. Nobody feels safe to walk outside their houses. My neighbors are all walking with baseball bats in their hands and being prepared to scream at any given moment. We talk about it at weddings, we talk about it at funerals, we talk about it at synagogue, we talk about it with our neighbors in the street. It spans all races and nationalities in our beautifully diverse neighborhood. We are 100% in lockstep, and we all agree that our kids and our dogs and our adults and elderly with canes who might be afraid and fall, we don't want to wait for the tragedy to happen, and we can say that we could have stopped it because we saw it coming. So I really would just implore everyone, I, I think that the heart of the council, I hear it, is theirs, is supportive of doing it, but I, I think sometimes we get caught up in the whole procedure, and we just need to act and do something to make our people safe in acute time. And maybe that the areas of Zone Two and Zone One and Zone Two and a Half can wait a little bit, but Zones Four, whether it's the area where the mayor was the other day or whether, where we are now, those are the areas that we need to act to protect our people. So thank you very much for taking my call, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you for calling. Anyone else? Okay, does anybody have any other comments or anything for our meeting tonight? All right, hearing none, I now declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful night.